Commissioner LaVassar.
Here.
Commissioner Dubac.
Here.
And Commissioner LaVassar informed me that Commissioner Gibbs will not be participating tonight, and I am here, Mike Fournier, Mayor of Royal Oak. So, we're going to begin instead of an invocation. I thought that it'd be prudent that we first start with an update quickly on what's transpiring in the community related to COVID-19 as we have done since we've been doing these remote meetings. First off, we have some things on the agenda tonight that we're going to discuss that are pertinent to, you know, our recovery and safety related to the pandemic. We will be talking about the situation with restaurants and potentially what we can do related to outdoor seating, cafe seating, closing down streets, some ideas that have been proposed all around the state. We have some information from staff tonight. We're also going to be discussing our recreation programs and some of our park activities and looking at some of the best practices out there and taking in some of staff's recommendation again to ensure that, you know, our community remains healthy and that we minimize the spread of COVID-19. And of course, with that, you know, this last week and this week where as a community we are having our budget planning session, which is obviously more complicated than it had been in the past, things are very fluid right now as far as what expenses we can expect in the near future, what some of our long-term liabilities might be as it relates to recovery from COVID-19, as well as what our revenues may look like related to shared revenue from the state, how our property values will hold up and things of that nature. And, you know, the budget process, although we'll establish a budget, just like in previous years, it's always a fluid process. And so it's always adapted on a regular basis as new things come to fruition. And we're going to have to be very agile from a budget planning perspective as we move forward. Once again, I want to inform everyone, if you have any needs or need any assistance, the city's here to help. We may not have all the resources at our disposal, but certainly we know who can help for any number of issues. If you have any food insecurity problems, you need a cloth mask, whatever it may be, please give us a call at 248-246-3200. Also, if you're a small business, less than 50 employees, the DDA and our Economic Development Team has put together a Rebound Royal Oak program to help assist small businesses. You can go to reboundroyaloke.com, find out your eligibility, and it's not necessarily on a first-come, first-served basis. So we encourage you to take an opportunity, apply, and we're here to help in the best capacities we can related through the Rebound Royal Oak function. So that's just a brief update. I also want to just make everyone aware that as it relates to, you know, our city personnel, we've had to date two recovered cases of COVID-19. So we did have, obviously, our police chief, Corrigan O'Donoghue, that made a lot of news, and he is fully recovered from what I understand, talking to him, and he's back working. We also had another employee in the fire department that is now recovered and back working. So thank goodness, we've been very fortunate that our teams have been employing good practices to keep fellow employees and fellow public servants safe. And we thank the public for helping our first responders stay safe by taking actions that are recommended from the CDC, the state of Michigan, and Oakland County. So that brings us after that update, it does bring us to item number three, which is the invocation. What I'd like to do in lieu of an invocation is just have a little bit of silence here. Royal Oak had lost 33 of our neighbors, and I just ask if we could bow our heads and show a moment of silence for 33 seconds to recognize those souls we've lost. Thank you. Our hearts, our prayers, our thoughts go out to the families and the victims of those we've lost here in Royal Oak. This brings us to item number four on our agenda tonight. That's a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, individual. Justice for all.
Now, this is the time set aside for our proclamations. We have a couple that we're going to read here today, the first being a proclamation designating the first Friday of June as Wear Orange Day for gun violence awareness. And then we'll follow that up with a second proclamation designating June as Gay Pride Month. So I see Ms. Warren is here today, a Royal Oaker, a leader in the Moms Demand Action Front, and she's here to receive this proclamation, Ms. Warren. Obviously, we would love to shake your hand and give you this in person for all the work that you're doing on behalf of our community and the awareness that you're bringing to Royal Oak related to gun violence. But, you know, this is the best we can do right now. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the proclamation, and if you could share a few words with us, we'd be greatly appreciative. So this is a proclamation designating June 5th, 2020, National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas gun violence exacts an enormous toll on Americans every day, with more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence daily, and on average, there are nearly 36,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns, and every American will know one victim of gun violence in their lifetime. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve, it's mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. Whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 100 Americans whose lives have been cut short in the countless survivors injured shootings every day, the first Friday of June is designated as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas June 5th, 2020, will be the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to support their local community efforts to prevent the horrific effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human lives. So it's our honor to present this to you, Ms. Warren. And, you know, you've done a lot of work here for a number of years, and if you'd like to make any comments, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Fournier. Thank you to the entire Royal Oak City Commission. You guys have been trailblazers in honoring Wear Orange Day. You were one of the very first cities in Oakland County to do it back in 2018, and of course, you did it last year, and now we've got a little bit different Wear Orange Day this year in 2020. We are going to obviously move it to the virtual world at wearorange.org. Why the color orange? You had mentioned Hadiya Pendleton after she was shot down walking home from school. Her friends asked us to stand up, speak out, and wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence. And of course, wear orange is the color that hunters wear to say, "Don't shoot me." So we wear orange to fight for a future free from gun violence. You mentioned quite a few statistics in there. I also wanted to make note that firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens. And of course, you mentioned the homicide side of things, but the suicide aspect of gun violence is one that we don't want to forget. Access to a gun increases the risk of death by suicide by three, three times. So that's something that we're trying to address as well. Again, wearorange.org is the place to be this year. Wear orange on Friday, June 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. And just as a reminder, everybody, June 5th, wear orange. This will be the day that we've designated. And thank you for making time from your busy schedule tonight, Ms. Warren, to participate and give us your words of encouragement as we move forward. So thank you. All right, this brings us to the proclamation designating June as Gay Pride Month. I see Ellen Napa is here. Hi, Ellen. So again, like Ms. Warren, I'm hoping that you'll find time and give us the pleasure of sharing a few words with us after we make this proclamation. So this is the proclamation designating June 2020 as Pride Month in Royal Oak. Whereas the city of Royal Oak supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And in November 2013, voters in Royal Oak made a commitment by approving the Human Rights Ordinance, making the rights the laws of the city. And whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic values, human beings. And whereas the city of Royal Oak accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic success of the city of Royal Oak. And whereas, as a society at large, we are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas to acknowledge the efforts to bring awareness to the continuing evolution to the Pride Movement, the city of Royal Oak will display the rainbow flag representing light, healing, sun, calmness, art, and spirit in front of City Hall for the month of June. And whereas to celebrate all families and all family members, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, straight, as part of Pride Month, Royal Oak was honored to host the inaugural Family Pride Event on June 12, 2019. And whereas the 2020 Family Pride Event had to be postponed because of COVID-19 pandemic, we invite everyone to celebrate on October 28, 2020, the Second Annual Royal Oak Family Pride, which will be bigger, better, and more proud in the spirit of community Royal Oak embraces. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim 2020 as Pride Month in Royal Oak, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. So it's my privilege and honor, Ms. Napa, to present this proclamation to you, and if you have a few words, we'd love to hear it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Fournier and City Commission. When I moved to Royal Oak in 2004, little did I know that 15 years later, I'd play an instrumental role in planning the city's first Family Pride Event at the farmer's market. I'd come out as queer many years before, but I was rather shy. As a matter of fact, when Royal Oak passed its Human Rights Ordinance in 2013, I remember attending an organizing meeting, but I couldn't imagine making phone calls or knocking on strangers' doors, no matter how important the cause was to me. In any case, the ordinance passed and we're a better city for it. What many don't know is that when I started writing for an LGBTQ newspaper in 2017, my first piece was an interview with a city leader who was a member of a group called Mayors Against LGBT Discrimination. Yes, that was Mayor Mike Fournier when he was new to the job. I framed that article. It was my first published piece. That brings me to the Family Pride Event, which I heard about a year and a half ago when I was at City Hall for another reason. Mayor Fournier and Cal Schwanger told me that a resident had come up with the idea, and I thought a family-focused Pride Event was pretty inspired. I signed up to help. And if you were there, you remember what a huge success it was. It was reported to be the most well-attended food truck rally in the market's history. While plans were underway for Family Pride 2020 when the coronavirus hit Michigan, we have not canceled the event, it's just postponed until October, and you can expect everything we had last year, including a performance by Sing Out Detroit and Drag Queen Storytime. New this year, more outdoor events, and by popular demand, no fees for parking in the structure that evening. And I'm excited to report there's more coming to our great city to make it even more inclusive and welcoming for all, including the formation of a Human Rights Committee, which I hope to be part of, and very soon, a citywide ban on the harmful practice of conversion therapy on minors to protect some of the most vulnerable among us, LGBTQ youth. Thank you again. I've seen Royal Oak come a long way, and I've come a long way too. I'm proud to say I recently purchased a condo after 15 years of apartment life here, which means I have plans to be here for a good, long time.
Ellen, thank you. And on behalf of the city of Royal Oak, thank you for everything that you've done for pride in this community. Your efforts and your work on the Family Pride Event are just a testament, not only to your inspiring efforts, but to our community. I think for anyone that attended that event, if it didn't make you feel emotional or bring a tear to your eye in terms of joy, I challenge if you're a human, because it was an amazing event. It was entertaining, it was fun. I know my kids enjoyed it, Commissioner Macy's kids, Commissioner Dubac's kids, all enjoyed the event. And on top of it, just seeing the community come together around such an important topic and really embrace our brothers and sisters was just something that, you know, was very touching to me personally, and I think to everybody that attended the event. And I think that really, I mean, you can put on an event, but I would like to tell you that it was much more than an event. It was really, you know, a validation of the accepting and loving community we live in. And I thank you and everyone else who helped make that event happen and for your continued efforts. Thank you, Ellen. Okay. Now that the proclamations are done, we're moving on to item number seven in tonight's agenda, which is public comment. I'm going to ask Ms. Schwanger and Mr. Wilson, do we have any public comment that came in tonight?
Mayor, we had only one public comment this evening.
Okay.
Let me just prepare to play that for you.
My name is Alex Kraxen. I live on Cooper Avenue, and I just wanted to tell you that the noise level on Woodward Gas Friday was horrendous. My windows in my house were rattling, cars were drag racing up and down Woodward. A lot of them sounded like they were shooting off machine guns, that they were exploding. Also, cars were blaring, their radios were loud. It was just unbelievably loud. So all I can figure is that traffic laws do not apply on Woodward. That's what I'm gathering from this happening over the past 10 years, that you can do whatever you want on Woodward and nothing's going to be done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger and Mr. Wilson. Appreciate you collecting the public comment and piping it in tonight's meeting. It was actually very clear last couple of times. I know they've been actually, no problem hearing it, so thank you. This brings us to item nine, which is the consent agenda. I know Mr. Gillum, related to item I on the consent agenda, you may have some things you want to pull off and discuss independently. I don't know, is there anything that you want removed from the consent agenda, Mr. Gillum, to talk about separately?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, specifically item number nine I, which is listed as the approval of tentative agreements. Specifically, the agenda item is to approve tentative agreements with two of the city's bargaining units with TPOAM and with SEIU. On Friday, we reached a tentative agreement with another group, the foremen and supervisors. This afternoon, we reached another tentative agreement with the Professional and Technical Employees Association. So I would ask that item nine I be removed from the consent agenda relative to the two proposed TA approvals, so we can approve all four TAs tonight.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to pull something off to talk about it independently from the consent agenda? Commissioner LaVassar. Item E. Item E. Okay. All right. So the consent agenda now consists of the city commission meeting minutes from May 11, approval of appointments committee rotation, claims from May 19, approval of purchase order, approval of renewal of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Agreement, approval of Berkeley School District Tax Collection Agreement to levy summer 2020 taxes on Royal Oak properties, and contract modification contract B1102 Department of Public Services Environmental Consulting Services. Is there a motion? Motion by?
Mayor.
Commissioner?
Agenda.
So we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Perush. Should we have a second by Commissioner Dubac? Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Dubac.
The clerk has claimed that we haven't approved the agenda yet.
Oh, you know what? You are right, I skipped the approval of the agenda. Mr. Gillum? What's the best way to unwind this?
Well, the motion to approve the agenda is completely separate, completely unrelated to the motion to approve the consent agenda, I believe. So I think it would be appropriate for the chair to accept a motion to approve the agenda. We can take care of that matter and then address the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. We'll do that. I apologize, everyone. Usually I got a printed agenda here that I'm marking things off, and I'm trying to do it on the fly in a separate screen here, so. So any discussion on the consent agenda as presented? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start from the top of my screen down to the bottom. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that brings us back to number eight. We'll go backwards before we hit nine I and E. And we'll move for the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda or add anything to the agenda? Commissioner Douglas? Commissioner Douglas moves with a second by Commissioner Perush? Okay, any discussion on the remaining part of the agenda? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. I'll start in reverse order. Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yeah.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we have an agenda. We've approved the consent agenda as it was presented, and that brings us to item E from the consent agenda that was pulled off by Commissioner LaVassar. Commissioner LaVassar.
Yeah, my concern here is similar to a concern I've raised on other occasions. This is essentially a renewal of a long-term contract without going up for new bids. I do believe that on occasion, to keep fresh and to make sure you're getting the best, the best deal for your taxpayers, you should go out to bid from time to time. And I don't see that, that there was any effort to go out to bid first before offering this to the incumbent auditor.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, I agree. This is a big contract. It's not timely. That is, it's not that there is some urgent work that needs to be done, and we want to quickly approve this. We are not bound to take the low bid on a professional services contract. We may well find that Raymond's bid comes back as the low bid, or even if they are not, the quality of the work that they've performed up until now may outweigh the bid. But there are a lot of accounting firms out there, and I would very much like to see what the rest of them have up their sleeve. I'm going to contrast this with an action at our last meeting where we approved a small amount of additional paving work by a contractor who was already the low bidder for a much greater amount of work. I think we, as commissioners, need to use common sense in making these decisions. I think the decision we made last week was the correct one, and I also feel that bidding this, this contract out is the common sense right decision here.
Ms. Rod, I'm going to ask you if you could shed a little bit of light on this, because my understanding, serving on the audit committee, is that we do this anyways after a number of years. We can't have the same auditors on the contract for a certain period of time, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe that, maybe that's antiquated knowledge. Can you elaborate a little bit? And I know there's some benefit to having the auditors, same auditors come back year to year, you know, because they can hit the ground running and already know the issues with the city. So can you enlighten us a little bit, Ms. Rod, on some of these dynamics? Ms. Rod, you're on mute? Oh, there you are. Okay.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
All right, thank you. No, we are allowed to continue using these auditors. We do have different partners and, and the individuals that come out and do the field work do rotate and change. Every, well, there's, there's new ones every year, but there's a couple holdovers every year as well. Correct about the efficiency. We have very valuable efficiency. Just to remind the commission, we have one full-time accountant in the finance department for a $200 million budget. Those efficiencies are very, very important. We've been working with Raymond for numerous years, as Commissioner LaVassar has stated. And again, what, what has come with that is a really good working and efficient process. I will say also, I recommend Raymond because they are a large firm, and it's very important, the timing of our audit, because we need time in December to file our various reports. And it's very important that it's completed, you know, by the end of November. So that's another reason why I recommend Raymond, because they are a large organization, and if they have turnover, they're large enough to get others to finish the audit. So that is why I am requesting the extension.
Ms. Rod, are you, I mean, to be clear, let's just say this went out and a different auditor came on board. Would that be extra complications for your finance department, you and your singular accountant, you know, as far as bringing them up to speed on everything and?
Absolutely. And not just the first year. I would take, it would take, I would think, a couple of years for us to get into an efficient group.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Rod? Commissioner Dubac?
Does Ms. Rod have any objections to this being bid out, or what's the worst-case scenario?
Um, I would say if we bid it out and Raymond did not come back lower and the smaller firms came back lower, there is a likeliness that I would not feel comfortable with smaller firms. So that's my biggest concern.
Well, I think we do so with the knowledge that you would look at the bids that come back and, and make your, you know, best recommendation as to which one's the most appropriate. Is there a chance, I would assume there's a chance that they come back with a bid higher than what they proposed for us here?
I guess there's a chance. I don't know. I'm not sure. I will say when we bid this out originally, back in 2014, I think it was, Raymond was not the lowest bid.
Commissioner Douglas's hand up.
Yes, certainly you can write specifications that detail the capacity of the kind of firm you're looking for. I mean, I think the risk of getting a small firm in at a low price, if that firm is not qualified, then you're not going to choose them just on the basis of price. And as I say, then you're not going to choose them just on the basis of price. And, and as I say, and as Ms. Rudd points out, even the last time around, Raymond was not the low bidder, but was the most qualified. So I don't think that there's harm here in losing the services of Raymond. And, you know, we might get a better price.
I just want to remind everyone too, I think, you know, I'm not opposed necessarily to bidding it out. I mean, we're looking at $60,000, $59,000, which is a lot of money. And if you could get it for half, which in my experience, you probably won't with a similar qualified firm. I mean, you're saving some money here. But we just had a budget meeting last week where Ms. Rudd has explained that she is struggling with, you know, proper staffing that has been, you know, decimated from the first recession back in 2011. And we haven't really, you know, brought back a lot of staff in her area. And her requirements have gone from 57 Gatsby to, you know, Gatsby 82 or whatever we're on, which is a lot more for her staff to, to manage. So I think that there's a risk that, you know, Raymond comes back higher. And there's a risk that, you know, we do go with somebody else and, you know, it's gonna cause extra effort and risk and jeopardize our audit being done on time. I would just ask my colleagues, you know, their thoughts on, is this the exact time to do this? Or do we bid it out next year, maybe when our budget stabilizes and our finance director isn't doing the equivalent of three budgets this year because of all the COVID-19 amendments we're probably gonna have to make? Just a thought. Commissioner Perush?
That's exactly the point that I was gonna make. If this were any kind of a normal year, I think it would probably make sense to go out to bid because there would probably be enough firms out there that would be able to present a bid that would be reasonable that we could compare with the Raymond bid. But this is, I don't think is the year to do that. This finance department is gonna be working very, very long hours for a very long period of time because not only are we dealing with an extraordinary budget right now, but it's gonna, as you say, be a rolling process as we get new budget projections from the state of Michigan, as we have to adjust. It's gonna be a year-long process. We just can't take this budget and put it on the shelf and wait until next fall to start the new one. This is gonna be an ongoing thing. And with the, with the finance department short-staffed, and we know it's been short-staffed for quite a while, I don't think that this is an additional burden that we should put on them at this time. It would be different if we were disappointed with the Raymond performance, or there were some issues about the work that they had been providing to us. But that's obviously not the case. And so from my view, this is not the year to throw in another wrench into the, the operations of finance department, which is essentially what this would be. So if, if the commission wants to look at alternative people or alternative firms, I, I don't think this is the year to do it.
Commissioner Macy?
I understand Commissioner Perush's point about this being a really busy year. Finance is a very strange and busy year. But at the same time, I feel like a large part of the burden of this is, is gonna fall not exactly on finance. If we're gonna bid it out and then they have to choose, it is additional work, but it's not like weeks and weeks of additional work. And this is a five-year contract we're talking about. We're not talking about one year. So are we gonna get a firm, this firm or any other firm, to agree to a one-year contract in order and say, hey, by the way, we're gonna bid this out again next year? Also, because we're in a sticky situation again this year, I think if we could possibly save money, this would be the year to do it. I guess it feels to me like I understand and I hear the harms of this, but they are not outweighed by the possible benefits of bidding it out.
Anybody else? Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to reject the resolution and instruct the staff to go out for bids on auditing services.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lavasser? Discussion?
No.
For Dubak?
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion. The reasons stated, I think it's highly unlikely we yield any real savings from this. And I agree with Commissioner Perush that it's, you know, great time to be experimenting with staff time, but we're gonna keep having this discussion. I think this is an appropriate contract to try it with and come back and reassess whether or not we should have just listened to staff recommendation because they're professionals with immense experience.
Anybody else? I'll just add, I mean, I don't know what the effort is to, to bid it out. But, you know, making the change is going to be problematic, I think, as explained by our finance director, Ms. Rudd. You know, this period. I think it's probably likely that we're gonna get the same price and the same recommendation, or a higher price with the same recommendation from staff. And so I don't see the benefits of bidding it out at this time and just creating an extra 10 hours of work for our finance staff, and we know what the ultimate result is gonna be anyhow. I do think looking down the road at potentially bidding it out is, is fine. But, you know, I, I caution. Sometimes people quote things because it isn't going out to bid and there's a chance that, you know, Raymond could reevaluate, sharpen their pencil, and the numbers go up because they probably put this price out there pre-COVID. Now they might be really busy dealing with bankruptcies and everything else. So I'm, I'm not gonna support. It's not that I'm against competitive bidding. I just don't think it's the right time. And I don't think it's the best use of staff time at this moment, right in the middle of budget planning season as well. And I don't think it's gonna yield any different result. All right, so I'm gonna call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Hi.
I vote no. Commissioner Perush?
No.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Okay, well, the vote passes. And Ms. Rudd, I suspect that, is this something that you can get back to us at the next meeting?
Oh, no, not that soon.
Okay.
Probably July.
Okay. All right, we'll wait for the results of the bid for July. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this brings us to nine I on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of tentative agreements. Mr. Gillum?
Aaron, Commissioners, as I indicated in my earlier remarks, when we had put the agenda together for tonight's meeting last week, at that point in time, we had reached tentative agreements, really extensions, tentative agreements for extensions, one-year extensions on existing contracts with the technical and professional officer workers of Michigan and also the Service Employees International Union, one-year extensions with both, essentially status quo with the exception of wages, a 2% wage increase as of July 1, and a 1% wage increase as of January 1 of next year, 2021. And just to remind everyone, those are the same wage terms that are contained in the last year of the agreement that we have with the Royal Police Officers Association. Those are also the same wage terms during the one-year extensions that we reached with the Detectives Association and the Commander Officers Association over at the police department. Subsequent to the time that we, we went to press with the agenda last week, we reached two other tentative agreements for similar one-year extensions with the same wage package. That is, the 2% is of July 1, the 1% is of January 1. First with the foremen and supervisors out at the Department of Public Services. And then this afternoon with our Professional and Technical Employees Association. Again, the same tentative agreements, the same pattern. The memo that was posted for the agenda recommended approval of the agreements with TPOIM and SEIU. I would ask that you also vote tonight to approve the tentative agreements with the foreman and the supervisors and with pro temp. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Gillum? Any motions? Let's see, Commissioner Macy with her hand up first. Commissioner Macy?
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Macy, and I saw a second, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
I'll just say thank you to our staff, to Mr. Gillum, for getting this done so quickly and efficiently so that we can take care of this and have this, have this understanding ready as we go into our budget year.
Now, I'll just add a thank you to our labor partners for the fact that, you know, over the last number of years, we've been able to cultivate a very trusting working relationship with our various unions. And I think that negotiations have always been very fair and progressive as far as making sure that, you know, we're doing right by the, the public that we mutually serve. And so much thanks for their efforts in the negotiating process. And of course, to Mr. Gillum and Mr. Schiffman and, and Dennis and everybody else that partook in, in support of making this happen. So very cooperative experience. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start from the bottom. Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Gillum.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, that brings us down to item 10, which is the recommendation to cancel summer recreation programs. And is this gonna be taken by Mr. Gillum, Mr. Fidelli, or Mr. Filipski? I assume Mr. Fidelli?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Mr. Fidelli, the mic is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Fornate, members of the City Commission. On March 23rd, 2020, Governor Gretchen Whitmer issued Executive Order 202021, which directed all non-essential business operations to be suspended. The governor has since issued related executive orders with one of the most recent Executive Order 202077, extending the stay-at-home order through May 28th, 2020. After a careful review of our recreational programs and the ways that we can safely offer those programs to our residents, the Recreation Department is recommending a tiered system of programming that will hopefully allow the city's recreation programs to resume in full after Labor Day. The first recommendation is that all summer programs, classes, summer camps, event, events that would include the Royal Oak Outdoor Art Fair and walk-in activities be canceled through Labor Day. This would include the following facilities: Jackie and Patty Salter Community Center, the Leo Mahaney and Harold Meyer Senior Community Center, and the John Lindell Ice Arena. When the Executive Order 202077 is no longer in effect, the Recreation Department expects there will still be safeguards and put that in public that'll make it impossible to offer the type of programming that our residents have come to expect in a manner that will be safe for everyone involved. Second, later this month, when Executive Order 202077 is no longer in effect, and both the governor's office and the Oakland County Health Division have provided further direction on the restrictions that are necessary to protect the public, the city can consider whether or not playground equipment, pavilions, facility rentals, sports courts, and even reopening up league play can begin. If not, those activities and the use of those facilities would continue to be prohibited through Labor Day. Finally, as the summer continues, the city can continue to work with our state and county officials on developing appropriate guidelines to gradually reopen and provide services to our residents with hopes of being able to start all of our fall recreation programs after Labor Day. I will say the decision to recommend cancellation of all summer programming, events, and classes was not easy for me. The health and wellness of the public, our residents, and our staff has been and will continue to be our number one priority. We encourage everyone to practice safe and healthy measures recommended by the Centers for Disease Control, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the Oakland County Health Division. The following resolution is recommended for adoption. Be resolved, the City Commission hereby approves the recommendations from the Recreation Department for the city's summer recreation program.
Now, you, Mr. Gillum?
Thank you, Mary. I could read your lips there. So just to, to kind of confirm or emphasize something that John said, this was not a, a simple or an easy decision. He and Aaron and I have been talking about this a lot for the last several weeks. Most of our neighboring communities have already made the decision to go ahead and cancel their summer recreation programs. There was a, a little bit of a push for us to, to jump on board and, and cancel our programs at the same time. But we kind of held out. We were hoping that there might be some way that we could salvage at least some of the programs at this point. But it seemed like for every time we thought of, of, of one way that we might be able to salvage one of our programs or something that we could do, that just caused two or three other problems. We couldn't come up with an answer to. So again, this is not a, a final decision. I mean, it is in the sense that at this point, we're canceling programs. We're still hoping that as we get through the summer, we'll be able to bring at least some of the programs back on board. But even if we can't do that, our goal is still be able to, be able to have everything fully operational, all the programs back up right after Labor Day.
Mr. Gillum. Mr. Fidelli, I mean, I imagine a lot of this is rooted in, like we've seen with events, like planning. You can't just say, oh, we're gonna have a recreation program and start it in two days. That, you know, making sure we give adequate notice to residents and to programmers and to people conducting the recreation and to all the services that go with it, and all the logistics and supply chains that go with providing the programming. This is something that, you know, you can't just, it's not an engine that you could just turn on and go. It takes a lot of planning. And I imagine that has a lot to do with, you know, at this time, making the recommendation to give at least some sort of consistent, you know, idea of what the summer's gonna look like. Knowing that, you know, with the new start line in, at, around the Labor Day time, am I incorrect in that presumption?
Exactly. I, I'd like to give any of our participants enough notice, whether we cancel classes or, or have classes. That way they can make the appropriate arrangements. And most of our summer classes and programming, they start mid-June, early July. So going through everything, you know, whether we have sign-in sheets, hand sanitizing stations, do we have participants wear masks when they're, you know, doing Tai Chi, whatnot? I mean, those are just different things that we've thought of that can be done to provide a safe environment for our participants. And there's a, there's a, there's a lot that needs to be done. And in a timely manner, it's, it's very difficult.
Mr. Fidelli, does this apply to any sort of, I know a lot of communities are starting to experiment with virtual programming. So whether that be, you know, sometimes it's, I don't, you know, might not always need the city's help. But, you know, whether it be like an exercise program via Zoom or something like that, is this something that, this wouldn't apply to this sort of programming, just the physical in-person programming that, that you would be canceling, correct?
Correct, yep.
And then one more question I see here in the second paragraph of your letter. It talks about the facilities and everything. A number of us got several emails related to the pickleball courts and tennis courts and things of that nature. What I read and interpret from your statement is basically, hey, the pickleball courts, I mean, right now, there's real no strong city programming, so to speak, for it. That's really done by, you know, the pickleball organization. But until we have the green light or clearance from the county or state that those facilities and playground equipment and all those things can be open, we're just gonna abide by those laws. So this doesn't affect, you know, we say we're canceling programming. That's different than saying that we're canceling the use of park equipment or park facilities or pickleball courts until Labor Day. Because if the county or the state were to lift those guidelines, we could, you know, theoretically allow, you know, open those facilities back up and allow people to use them, correct?
Correct. Like the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, you know, the, the baseball fields, playground equipment, those would fall under the, the second tier of the recommendation, which would be to wait for further guidance from the state and local officials. So currently, they're close to make sure everyone's staying at home, no small gatherings, stuff like that. And then once we get further guidance, hopefully close to the May 28th timeframe, see where we can go and hopefully get those courts and those fields opened up.
So if the state says on May 28th, or, you know, the governor before that, and the county executives say, yeah, we can do tennis courts and basketball courts and pickleball courts, then we can open those up. There's, this resolution wouldn't apply to that.
Correct, yep. And then just going off of the, the state's phase plan that Governor Whitmer put out, the six phases, I believe currently or right now- put out, the six phases, I believe currently, right now, we're in phase three, which for outdoor recreation is walking, biking, hiking, golfing, and boating. Phase four, which I anticipate would be close to the May 28th, June 1st timeline, would include all those activities, would also include small groups with social distancing. So, regarding what size a small group is, would be determined by the local and state officials. And then, phase five would allow for all outdoor recreation. So, those are just some parameters that we're looking at as well.
All right. So, it's possible down the road, we, in phase 3.5, phase four, whatever, that, you know, some of us could play tennis, but maybe we don't volley at the net within, you know, two feet of each other. Okay, I had Commissioner Lavasser, and then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you. With regard to tier two, upon getting approval from the state, getting approval from the county, would there be any time delay in getting open, making available the playground equipment, the tennis courts, the pickleball court, or is that something we're able to move forward fairly quickly on?
That's something that we can move fairly quickly on, depending on staffing time and size. Opening up the tennis courts is essentially going out there and just putting up the nets, cleaning off the courts. Same with the pickleball, taking down the pickleball nets and setting them up on the courts. The pickleball, most of the pickleball groups, they go out and they install the courts. We bring them to the courts and they install themselves. And same thing with the basketball nets, you know, we can set those up. And the playground equipment, we can, you know, tear down the caution tape and signs and get those opened up fairly quickly.
Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Macy?
Yes, as the mayor said, we all, the commission got a full court press, unintended, from the pickleball team. And what I said to them, I will say here, this is not a political decision, it's a technical decision. I mean, there are decisions that should be made by experts, not by elected leaders. And I'm fully in favor of listening to the professionals using the knowledge and resources of the Oakland County Health Division, our professional staff, and their peers to make a decision based on evidence, not on, it's not a policy decision.
Commissioner Macy?
So, I agree with what Commissioner Douglas was just saying, although I'm wondering, it seems like that decision is being made on some, on the information that we have right now on May 18th, whereas we're going to find out more, increasingly more over the next few months, apparently, a lot more, maybe in 10 days. And I just wonder, I mean, the summer is long, and we haven't really even entered it yet. Three months from now will be mid-August. Three months ago, we could never have imagined we are where we are now. So, I just wonder, to me, it makes sense in terms of the notice and the planning and everything that goes into it, to cancel maybe the first half of summer recreational programming. But I feel like, to me, it seems like there's time between now and then to start to think about how we could make those things possible. I understand you're saying we want to be ready to go Labor Day, but it seems like the second half of the summer might be a good time to try out some of these ideas. I do think, I mean, we could be having virtual programming right now. And it makes me anxious to think about the Salter Center and the Senior Center being completely closed for that period of time. I just feel like, while we are, of course, concerned about the health and the issues related to COVID, and we'll be listening to the experts at the state and the county level, we also have to be aware of the mental health and the physical and emotional health that residents are dealing with right now, too. And we don't want to be the last ones back in. We don't want to be the ones who are holding back Royal Oak residents from participating activities that the state and county have said are now safe. So, to me, right now, putting a blanket, cancellation all the way through the end of the summer, seems like maybe a step too far. And I'm just wondering if Mr. Fidelli, who I understand, I know he wants to do this, we're going to get that kickball league sometime. I know you want to do this. I'm just wondering what the thought is on doing the whole summer instead of just getting that first slice of the summer down?
Well, you know, recreation is why it was very difficult. A lot of people use recreation as an escape from their regular lives. You know, they go out, they go yoga after work, you know, as a release. They play adult kickball, hopefully, or adult softball, you know, after, you know, and have fun with their peers and whatnot. So, the decision to make, the decision to make this was not easy, because I, you know, I understand, I really want everyone to get out there and just enjoy themselves, and recreation is a good avenue for that. The other, the counter to that is by canceling the classes, most of our instructors have a limited participation, so they can come to us and say, we need a minimum of 10. Or, if we do happen to get 25 or 30 people, and the state or local officials give us a small group size, and then we have to pretty much turn those people, you know, how do you turn people down? Do you do it based on when they first registered? Then, how do you tell the instructor, hey, you had 25, but now you're only getting five or 10, you know, can you still do that? And most of the programs that we offer are about 10 weeks long. So, you know, do we, do we, do we clean the floors after every class? Do we clean the floors after every two classes? Right now, the staff that we have in the buildings are not equipped and ready to go through each room that a program is run and is able to wipe down the countertops, mop the floors, disinfect the area. So, there's a lot of, you know, pros and cons that are weighed during this decision. And, I mean, unfortunately, the way we came about is just to cancel the summer programs through Labor Day. There are some, there are, most of the communities are canceling their programs through Labor Day, we'll say.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yeah, just following up on questions that Commissioner Macy asked. I'm wondering, would it be workable to choose a date, say, July 4th instead of Labor Day for something like this? And then, as we get closer to July 4th, we can determine whether it makes sense to extend that further?
The, say it's on July 4th, it's possible, but like I said, it goes back to, you know, do we have sign-in sheets? Do we have hand sanitizing stations? Do we have six-feet distancing? Some classes, you know, for instance, like our Tai Chi classes, stick in hand, they have Tai Chi sticks. So, yes, you can do six-feet distancing with those, because there's already six-feet distancing in those classes. Some other classes, however, you know, they're put into rooms that are close quarters, so there may not be that six-foot distancing there. We like to give everyone a good notice so that they can plan it out. And I'm not one, I don't like to essentially cancel things or go by week by week what we can or cannot do.
Commissioner Prush?
I think, my way of approaching this is I'm looking at what other communities are doing and what other organizations are doing. I know that Royal Oak Schools, for example, have canceled all of their summer programs. So, I look to them as an example of especially how to handle youth programs, because that's what they deal with exclusively. Also, it's my understanding that the YMCA here in Royal Oak has effectively canceled almost all of its summer programs. And given the fact that there is so much unknown going forward, we don't know what restrictions are going to be lifted, and we don't know how many of them are going to be relifted, and when, I think it makes planning for a block of time, like the summer, almost impossible. I mean, certainly, on July 4th, we may wake up and say, okay, now, certain restrictions are, have been lifted. We might be able to do a certain portions of our recreational program. But up until that date, you haven't been able to plan for it, you haven't been able to staff for it, and you haven't been able to publicize it to get any kind of registration. And that's assuming that people are going to be wanting to come together and participate in some of these programs. So, I guess, based upon my understanding what other entities around us are doing, I think this is a reasonable approach to take. Hopefully, soon, we can get at least the courts open and the play structures open, because my granddaughter walks by it practically every day, and it's really, it would be nice to have the yellow tape on. But in terms of actual programming, I think the logistics of picking that up in the middle of the summer would be extraordinarily difficult. We don't have the staff for it. As Mr. Fidelli said, there still might be some very significant sanitation issues involved, which we don't have the staff or the capability to handle. So, I think, as tough as it is, I think this is the prudent approach to take at this point in time.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, you know, I mean, it takes three to four weeks to get any of this stuff rolling. Once we get new information from the county or from the governor. So, let's just say that the governor, you know, makes some sort of ruling about recreation activities at the end of May, and the county takes a week to process it. You know, let's say, June 1st, we finally get an idea of what the, what we can and can't do, what the best and safe practices are. You're going to need three or four weeks anyways to figure out how to implement it. And so, you brought yourself into July, you know, but we'd have to have a meeting in there somewhere in between to, you know, approve it. And so, you do it to July 4th, you get three or four more weeks. I mean, you're really talking about, at the end of it, a handful of weeks that we're trying to mitigate for if we tried to shift these dates around. And I don't know that the likelihood that that's even going to happen. So, I just want to, it's not, again, we're not flipping a switch here. It takes time to plan. Even when you get the green light, you've still got a lag of a few weeks. I have Commissioner Dubac that wants to weigh in, and then Commissioner Macy has her hand up. And Commissioner Lavasser, do you want to weigh in, too, or is your hand still up from last time?
My hand is still from last time. I'll wait to hear what Commissioner Dubac and Macy say, and then, maybe I'll want to talk, maybe not, but right now, I don't.
Okay, Commissioner Dubac, and then Commissioner Macy, and potentially Commissioner Lavasser.
Yeah, I'm as eager as anyone to get things backed up and running. I've got three kids that would love to have our programs running this summer. But I agree that it's best to be prudent at this point, and the best guidance that we have right now is that it's not likely we're going to be able to do that. But I think having our sights set on fall and trying to prepare for that is the right move. I want clarity, though, as far as opening parks and our courts for use, because I'm eager to get back out there with the mayor to, you know, do some kick in tennis. Is that based on guidance from the state and the county, and once they say we're good to open, then we will?
Correct. You know, waiting for the states and guidance to say how many people can gather. You know, right now, they say you can't use any playground equipment, you know, we've put restrictions on basketball courts, no physical activities, because they don't want participants sweating and jumping on each other, you know. So, when they come out, hopefully, with some guidelines saying, you know, they can, we can have this many people playing together or gathered together, you know, that would give us some more insight on opening up our tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts, and playground equipment.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be waiting for the, you know, the signal leadership from state and county health experts on that, which I think is also the right thing to do.
Correct.
Just curious, and I think Commissioner Macy had mentioned earlier, or perhaps she had mentioned in your presentation, like, what we're seeing a lot, you know, during this crisis is a lot of innovation, you know, realizing, you know, there's maybe options that we had that we had not been utilizing, you know, virtual engagement or service delivery. Just curious, what we're doing to try and think outside the box to offer opportunities for our residents, for our youth, for our seniors to engage, to be healthy, albeit not together in an enclosed space. But what can we do virtually? What can we do in wide spaces? What kind of, are we, you know, putting together recommendations or documentation for folks to be, you know, be out, be healthy, and enjoy the summer?
So, I've started to reach out to our program teachers to see if they have any sort of resources that they can do, remote classes, virtual classes. So, I'm just getting some feedback from them, seeing what types of programming, even if it's limited, that we can provide for our residents. So, hopefully, I can hear back from them relatively shortly and get a census of what they're coming back at, and see where we can go from there.
Mr. Fidelli, would it be a problem if, you know, if this motion, someone were to make a motion here that's recommended, but also within that motion directed you, let's say, at the next city commission meeting, to sort of provide us an idea of some of those innovative ideas that we could do and start to publicize for the public. So, maybe there's a online Tai Chi class, maybe there's something that the youths are doing online, you know, via Zoom with, you know, some sort of, you know, sporting activity. I don't know, how many times can you kick a soccer ball? I don't know. There's a lot of crazy stuff out there. Is that something that you would feel like you could at least bounce some of those ideas and, you know, look for the best we can, reasonable substitutions to the physical into the, into the virtual?
Yes, I could do that.
Okay. And then, Commissioner Macy, you had your hand up, sorry.
Okay, well, you, Mayor, and Commissioner Dubac covered a lot of what I wanted to say. I did want to push back a little bit about everyone else having canceled. Like, maybe some of the cities around us have canceled, but I just got an email today, we're sending our children to an overnight Y camp in July, and they told us it's still on, starting even in late June. I mean, of course, things could change between now and then, but it's not true that every single thing is canceled through the summer. And I guess, what I feel uncomfortable with is canceling it through the summer as if we're not doing any of these innovative things that we're talking about right now, that we're not having these new ideas. So, I love the idea of having, coming back with some ideas that we can do. I also would feel more comfortable with this resolution if what we were saying is all pre-planned programming for the summer is canceled. We are looking into how we're going to be creating new programming going forward. There may be some, some programs released midsummer based on what the needs and desires are and where we are in terms of our stage. So, I guess that kind of the flat canceled makes me feel like we're even trying, we have four months, we can do something in between now and then. But I think if we were to cancel what we have going and then say we're looking into creating new options for our residents, I think that's what, that's all I'm trying to say. That's all I'm trying to get out there.
Well, you could probably make that in the form of a motion, Commissioner Macy, where you could, I mean, I'm sure Mr. Fidelli said that he's going to explore those ideas, and I think we're probably all on board with, hey, anything logistically preplanned, fine, but, you know, in substitute that, you know, direct the recreation staff to look at substitutions that are either virtual or, you know, compliant and innovative with, you know, the regulations and laws as they become more apparent.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. I would have said-
It's really a team motion between you and me, Mayor.
I would have set it much better and more articulate if that were the case. Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion. Mr. Lavasser?
Yeah, I don't know if a motion is precisely the way I would have made it. Maybe it is. But what I was kind of envisioning is one where we adopted the recommendations with the modifications that through July 4th, with the expectation that the first meeting in June, first regular meeting in June, that the department would come back to us with further thoughts on the remainder of the summer. If you believe that that's accomplished through this motion, I can, I can support that, but it sounded a little different than that to me.
Commissioner Macy?
I don't think that date of July 4th is in there, but I think the intent is the exact same, that we're going to be hearing very soon at the next meeting in June, what the options are going forward for recreation, and we can make a further decision about what, what the rest of the summer will look like, and just canceling for the moment all pre-planned programming.
Mr. Gillum?
Okay, Commissioner, just one thought. I mean, the recommendation that we brought forward is for basically a tiered approach, the recreation programs for the rest of the summer. And it sounds like that's kind of what we're talking about, but we're almost adding a tier.
Yeah.
If the pre-planned programs are being canceled right now, then the next tier is going to be to look at alternatives, in particular, to look at some virtual programs. And I think what John has indicated, he can bring some recommendations back to you at our first meeting in June.
Yep. Is that everyone else's understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thumbs up. Commissioner Douglas?
No, that's exactly what I heard in the motion that the mayor articulated.
Didn't really articulate it that well, but thank you for the compliment. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush? Commissioner Prouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I got a count of six there, six oh. All right, Mr. Fideli, we, uh, you know, go, uh, grab those light bulbs from back in the day and, uh, you know, good luck with, um, you know, coming up with some really cool ideas. Um, you know, I think this commission has always embraced creativity, so, you know, um, don't be too afraid to bring us crazy ideas. We know you're up to it, we know you have some things already in the back of your mind, and we look forward to some of the creative things you can um, bring to the community and 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 help make a benchmark for everybody else in the state. So thank you.
Not a problem. We'll talk again.
All right, talk to you soon. All right, this brings us to item number eleven on tonight's agenda, which is the Downtown Development Authority recommendation to waive twenty twenty sidewalk cafe fees, and I see Mr. Do I see Mr. Twing on?
Yes.
Yes, he is. Okay, Mr.-
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor, member of the commission. Uh, you do have a recommendation from the DDA. It's a two, two-part recommendation. Uh, the first part of it is a recommendation that the city commission waive uh, the twenty twenty sidewalk cafe fees uh, for uh, renewals, as well as uh, if we received any uh, new applications for sidewalk cafes. Uh, the second part of their recommendation uh, was to ask the city commission to direct city staff uh, to look at ways to uh enlarge sidewalk cafes, uh, provide more space for them in order to uh, provide some social distancing as part of the COVID nineteen uh, process going forward. Uh, that could be changing ordinances, relaxing uh, certain provisions. Uh, uh, they didn't get into the specifics of it, other than uh to ask the city commission to rec- recommend that city staff look into it um, and and bring that back to you. Um, as I indicated in the commission letter, there, there were some thirty-three sidewalk cafes that were up for renewal in twenty twenty. I believe a couple of them have already paid their fees. Obviously, we can refund those if you um, choose to waive the fees. Um, total estimated uh, cost was somewhere around sixteen thousand dollars in terms of what would be waived if you were to agree with the DDA's recommendation. Uh, there is a suggested resolution or a recommended resolution at the bottom of the commission letter if uh, the city commission chose, so chooses to move forward. That's all I have.
Sorry about that, guys. Uh, I had Commissioner Macy, I had Commissioner Lavassar, and then Commissioner Prouse. Uh, I did see Mr. Gillum's hand up, and I'm sure that's because of me, correct, sir?
Actually, not, no, if I can jump in real quickly, just, just with a little bit of additional background. Um, I know that my office was contacted, and I think at least some of you individually were contacted by some of the restaurants here in town um, in early April um, regarding the renewal of the sidewalk cafe licenses for this year. Um, and the, the discussions that I had with the people that contacted our office was that I thought this, this was something that the city commission would consider, whether it was waiving the fees or at least prorating the fees, once we knew when the restaurants were gonna be able to open back up. Um, and I told them when I thought we had a little bit more clear information, a little bit better sense as to when restaurants might be able to to open back up, that we'd be bringing this to the city commission. As it worked out, um, we have a general idea as to maybe when the restaurants will be able to start to resume, um, maybe the end of the month, maybe um sometime early in June, based upon the action that the governor took today regarding uh, northern, lower Michigan and the Upper Peninsula. Um, but, um, whatever, um, the action that the the DDA took to bring the recommendation forward, it just kind of uh, teed the, the issue up a little bit earlier than I thought we would talk about it, but uh, it's definitely something that that uh, needs to be discussed and something that um, a lot of the businesses are very interested in.
Commissioner Macy?
My little blue hand was actually still up from the parks talk, but if you're gonna call me, I'll talk. Um, so, I mean, I think this is a great thing that to, for the DDA to be bringing us. I think we've all been thinking and talking and hearing people discuss these issues of how we're gonna get back in those restaurants, um, how we're gonna keep them afloat, the ones that are, the ones that are here, our local restaurants. Um, and I think obviously it's gonna have to be outside. It just seems to be clear from all the evidence that we're seeing and um, all the information we're getting about COVID, and the ways that we can expand this through our own uh, help, I think we should do as much as we can to assist them. Sixteen thousand dollars doesn't seem like that much. We'll have seven hundred thousand dollars coming up soon that we're gonna think about this. Uh, this seems like a good way to support our businesses and to get back and get eating. We've been enjoying the takeout, but I'd like to get back out there.
Commissioner Lavassar.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Mr. Gillum, you know, my question has to do with whether or not ordinance changes are are needed here to accomplish what uh, the DDA would like us to accomplish. And my concern there is uh, the delay that's caused by having to have two meetings, two readings, and then a ten-day waiting period before an ordinance is effective. I wanted to get your input on that.
There really aren't no specific ordinance amendments that would be required. Um, the sidewalk cafes that um, that we license now, um, it's done by way of a license agreement um, with the businesses based upon our authority to to operate and regulate the public right of way. So we do have some requirements. We do require um, a plan to come in, because we need to make sure that the area is gonna be um, separated or secured. Um, we need to make sure that there's still gonna be adequate room for people to get by on the sidewalk. Um, a lot of those requirements, I think, are still gonna apply. Um, the, the bigger issue, and and I would invite Chief O'Donoghue to weigh in on this, because I know he had some discussion with Senator McMorro's office about this last week, but I think a bigger issue is more in terms of what the Michigan Liquor Control Commission is gonna allow, in terms of the outdoor service of alcohol, in terms of licenses and permits, what's been approved, what's already been approved, what additional approvals would be needed, um, and what might not even be allowed at all would require them to either, either waive some of their current requirements or modify their standards. And that's something that we really don't have any control over.
Commissioner Prouse, and then Commissioner Douglas.
Um, in terms of the actual opening of the sidewalks, I think we have to keep in mind that looking to what is happening up in north, or will be happening up in northern Michigan after Friday, even though they're going to be have, have, will have permission to have outdoor sidewalk cafes and restaurants and bars open and so on and so forth. They're gonna be doing it at significantly reduced capacity and significantly with the social distancing in place. So a restaurant, maybe on a good day, might only be able to pull in maybe fifty percent of the revenue that they usually would on a summer day or on a Memorial Day weekend. So the fact that even though our restaurants might be open a little bit sooner than we might anticipate, maybe after the first of June, it's hard to say. Even at that point, they're gonna be operating with a much, much significantly reduced revenue than they otherwise would. So the fact that we can do even a small amount in terms of giving them some economic relief by waiving the fees is really important, because even when they're gonna be open, they're not gonna be doing the business nearly what they did on a normal year.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Gillum touched on this briefly uh, in, when he mentioned the, the depth of some of the sidewalk cafes, because of course, once you've got a sidewalk cafe at a railing at a certain um, intrusion into the sidewalk, the sidewalk may be so narrow that passersby can't be six feet away from patrons at the cafe or other passersby. Um, there's been a chatter about um, closing down or or widening the sidewalks or narrowing um, streets, Washington, um, in fact, and that might enable us to extend uh, the cafes across the whole width of the sidewalk, moving pedestrian pass, uh, traffic into the parking spaces and removing parking in those areas. Are we, do we have the capacity to examine that, and would the MLCC rules? Uh, I mean, I know we're still waiting to to hear what those might be, but are we, do we think that might be a possibility? I guess-
It doesn't matter whether we've heard anything specifically from the MLCC yet. So, um, I think, I think the ideas are still kind of in formation, but I, it's, it's been brought to, to the attention of several of our representatives. That's an issue. It's something that's gonna need to be addressed if we're gonna be able to do the kind of things that people are talking about to offer assistance to our businesses.
Before I go to Commissioner Prouse, I'd like Chief O'Donoghue to weigh in. He has his hand up.
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Douglas, if we ex- closed down the street and then um, expanded their outdoor service area, we could probably do that under existing rules. Um, but it would, the the service would be limited to a controlled area outside the store. So um, if you wanted the alcohol to be to, to more kind of loose aspects, that would be in violation of current MLC rules. And that's kind of what we're asking them to just let local look, uh, local governments kind of regulate that for themselves, as we try to figure out the best way to reopen.
So as an example, uh, Chief O'Donoghue, you know, we could, you know, let's say, close down the street, we could get approvals for outdoor cafes to extend into the street, uh, like they extend onto the sidewalk, and that's within the jurisdiction, but if we wanted to make it simpler and simply say, hey, like, we could close off the street, and if, you know, everybody wants to sell with a plastic cup, you know, you could have people walking around and make it more efficient and less costly and burdensome and administrative. Whereas the city and the uh, restaurants alike, that would take MLCC action to give us that authority. Is that how we understand it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Douglas.
So just to clarify, so if we were to just expand the railing of a given establishment, if, if right now it's a certain size, and we give them the approval to expand the railing, once they've contained that area, whatever size it is, liquor sales are allowed within that railing?
Yes, yep.
Good, okay, thank you.
So, I mean, my perspective on this and is that, you know, certainly I believe, I mean, we're seeing some some indications, uh, even from today's conference from the governor, about what's happening in Traverse City in northern Michigan and the UP. Um, whatever we do, I think the, the summer months are short, right? We have to hit the ground running. So, you know, we have to be prepared for any scenario that could come out of the governor's office and out of the county's office. Um, and where, you know, we're thinking about what plans could work for us, and under what scenarios, and be ready to execute within a day's notice um, to support our restaurants when the green light is given, that it's healthy and safe under certain conditions to come out. If that's, hey, you can come out to eat, but you gotta wear a mask, you know, the server's gotta wear a mask, and you gotta follow all these rules, okay. Um, you know, and if we have to limit, you know, so many seats per square foot in an outdoor cafe, and they have to reside a certain distance from the sidewalk to prevent, you know, a clean pathway for people to walk by, then we gotta think about that. If we have other businesses or residences, that we have to manage the traffic so they can get in and out of their place of business or residence, you know, if we shut down the street, we gotta think about that. Do we do it just on weekends, whatever it may be? I think we gotta have a concept. I don't think we wanna, you know, pull out our pencil and um, and sketchbook, you know, after we know what's going on. I think we gotta prepare for different scenarios. That's my opinion. I saw Commissioner Dubach with his hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my internet's spotty today.
We can hear you.
All right. Um, no, I agree with some of the previous comments. I think it's appropriate for us to to provide some, some relief to uh, our, our local businesses, especially given that uh, the summer season is both abbreviated and and gonna be, uh, I think somewhat differently attended. Um, I think we should be consistent that, you know, our, first and foremost, you know, public safety is our, our top priority. And I think exploring the possibility of expanding those outdoor spaces in the public right of way into the street even, um, allow for both uh, some support for, you know, our downtown businesses uh, and to allow for public safety. So I think um, we should be exploring that, so we can be ready as soon as uh, our state's uh, health leaders um tell us that it is okay for people to begin to gather, albeit uh, while practicing social distancing. Um, and, you know, whatever the health recommendations are at that time, so. Uh, I agree with you, Mayor. We should be out in front of this and have a plan ready to go that we may have to modify as things progress.
I also think that plan needs to incorporate um, the input of our restaurant owners and you know, other stakeholders in the downtown area, and how we manifest that um, into, you know, the decision-making. Um, I'm not sure of the best way. I mean, certainly you can create another task force and do all this, or we can put staff on point to, um, you know, find the right people. Clearly, you know, representatives from the, the DDA, maybe the DDA manager, somebody from the Restaurant Association, um, just as a, as a staff-picked advisory council, um, you know, to help you um, get input and and take that input and and, you know, turn it into a decision that, you know, works as best as possible for everybody. Um, Chief O'Donoghue, are, is your hand legitimately up, or did you forget to take it down, or um?
I forgot to take it down. There you go.
Okay. Copy that. Commissioner Prouse?
From what I've heard from certain members in the DDA, they are ready to jump into solving this issue, at least helping the city come up with a plan so that if in fact, it does seem like something that the LCC would approve of, and it sounds like according to the chief, it is, um, they are ready to start sitting down and and putting together at least the, the framework of a plan, so that whenever we would get a go-ahead, um, we would be ready, because as you say, the summer is so short. And if we, if we wait until we're actually given the go-ahead, which we will at some point, we just don't know when, um, and then we have to take two or three weeks to get up to speed and make it all work, we're losing valuable time. So I think whether it's the chief, or whether it's um, Mr. Twing, or Mr. Gillum, or somebody else, should at, at this point from the city level we late, take the lead and reach out to the DDA people, number one, and then perhaps also to the Restaurant Association and just say, okay, you know, this is something we're comfortable with. Um, we think that there's ways to make this work, given within the existing LCC rules. Um, let's see if we can't work out a plan so that when we give them the green light, we're ready to go. Um, so I, I guess I would, I would prefer to act now, so to give them the direction to do that, um, so that, uh, so that we're ready, because the summer's gonna go really, really fast.
And then I think Commissioner Prouse, the discussion also is, what sort of delegative authority do we give administration to execute that quickly, like we did with the um, packaged liquor sales, um, you know, for the curbside delivery and things of that nature? I don't think we've had any complications by, you know, permitting the chief and the city manager and the city planner to, you know, make um, decisions on the spot. I mean, we can always put something on the next agenda if we don't think something's working or it could be done better. But to what extent can we, as long as they're getting that input, you know, do we give them administrative, you know, if it's sidewalk permitting, you know, approving sidewalk permits uh, that expand into the city streets or to the, to the parking or whatever, you know, can we give them that authority or autonomy to do that? Uh, I see actually Mr. Twing had uh, his hand up, and then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Douglas.
Um, I just wanted to indicate that I, I think at least from my intent, if you pass this resolution, would be to have something back to the commission to address the issues that we can address. The state issues with MM, or the MLCC, obviously are out of our control, but and and I also think that whatever plan we would come up with would have options, because not every person in the downtown or every restaurant is the same. So we, we, we're not gonna really be able to treat them all the same. Um, and and we are gonna have to comply with some other code issues in terms of ADA uh, accessibility on the sidewalks and some other things. So I think the intent, at least from my end, would be to have a plan ready that uh, the city manager, the police chief, fire, everybody can sign off on, but would have options um, as to how uh, an individual uh, restaurant uh, could choose to move forward.
About Commissioner Douglas, and then Commissioner Lavassar.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to uh, move support of the resolution as um, uh, presented by staff.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Dubach. Uh, discussion, I'll go to Commissioner Lavassar before the motion.
Thank you. Uh, you know, my question is, to the degree that um,
You know, my question is to the degree that, um, staff needs further input or consultation with the commission, is this something that could be handled at our scheduled budget meeting on Thursday of next week?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Gillum, I think that at that budget meeting, if we needed to make a decision on something or review it, we could add it to the top of the agenda. Is that i- if we have something prepared by then? My.
Oh, you're correct. I mean, as long as we get the, uh, the, the meeting posted as a special meeting and not just a work session, it should be a special meeting anyway, but as long as the posting is clear, we can take formal action on something unrelated. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Douglas.
Well, yeah, I think the motion accomplishes what I've heard asked for here at the table. We're asking staff to review and update ordinances and we are also asking them to streamline the application inspection and approval processes, um, to adapt to the current timeliness of the pandemic. I, I think that th- those are their marching orders. And, and as Commissioner Lavasser points out, we've got, uh, two more, uh, budget meetings before we even get to our June meeting where if there are any approvals necessary, we could vote on those.
Uh, I had Commissioner Perush and Commissioner Macy.
I had my questions answered. I'm all set.
Okay, Commissioner Macy.
I was just going to ask, are we definitely having that budget meeting next Thursday? I thought sometimes that was like a reserved meeting if we didn't finish.
Well, I guess if we choose not to have that meeting, we'll have to see where we stand with this process and decide if we still have the budget meeting and/or turn that meeting into something different.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's on our schedule regardless, but I'm just curious.
The conversation that I've had with, with Ms. Rudd, she indicated that she thought we were going to need the third meeting this year. I don't know if that's changed after the meeting we had last week or not.
Commissioner Douglas.
Um, he said what I was going to say.
Yeah, it's not an easy budget this year. Imagine we're going to maximize that time. Okay, all right, we have motion on the table. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Dubac.
I.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Okay. All, all right, clears mud, Mr. Twing?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. Get my agenda back in order here. Uh, this brings us to item number 12, Royal Oak Manor, request for angle parking on South Williams Street. I imagine that this is.
It's mine as well.
Twing as well.
But you have received, the city has received a request from Royal Oak Manor. Their, their, uh, management company, to be correct, you should have a copy of their letter, uh, in your packet. They are requesting that the city license, uh, street parking on the west side of Williams Street between Sixth and Seventh Street for use by the Royal Oak Manor residents. They have submitted a preliminary, uh, plan. And but, but before staff, engineering, fire, uh, we may have them make any modifications to that plan. I wanted to have a brief discussion with the commission about whether or not this was a concept or proposal that the commission was supportive of, um, in this area. I will remind the commission that we have done this in a couple of other places, um, in terms of trying to license angle parking. And, and there's been some backlash to that. Uh, the one on West Street between, uh, Eleven Mile and Sherman Drive, you may recall. One of the, one of the adjacent property owners, uh, contributed to putting in angle parking. And then one of the neighbors objected to it, uh, and there was, uh, some revisions that had to be made to that. I would also point out that in this area, uh, of Williams Street and Royal Oak Manor, several years ago, the city chose to put meters in because some of the other property owners around there, uh, the condominium owners wanted to be able to get, uh, parking on the street as well. So I think the big question in my mind at this point, uh, for the commission is, do you want a concept where you're going to license, uh, angle parking for the use of Royal Oak Manor? And if so, under what conditions or criteria, uh, that, that would be acceptable to the commission? I wasn't planning on spending a lot of time talking about their design this evening. Uh, I believe in talking with, uh, their engineer, our engineering department. We may be able to come up with a design that's, uh, acceptable for everyone's, uh, criteria. But the real issue to me was, did you want to go down, uh, this road to license, um, parking on Williams Street for the use of, uh, Royal Oak Manor? Now, I do know that there are, I believe there's three representatives, uh, on this Zoom meeting. Diane Smith, uh, Brad Brickell, uh, and I don't see the other gentleman's name, but I believe there was a Mr. Downing that, uh, was also going to be involved in this call. With that, I will stop and see if there's questions from me or, or for the requesting parties.
Mr. Twing, is the proposal, um, to make those spots, those 16, go from six to 16 exclusively for, um, the use of Royal Oak Manor? Or is it the incremental 10 that would go? Or is it just open, but a permit would be allowed in any of those 16 spaces? Or that's sort of the feedback you're looking for?
Um, well, I don't believe the letter is, uh, clear in the sense of, of how many all or what time period. Uh, I believe they are requesting that they be used or be assigned for Royal Oak Manor's residential use, whether that's 24/7 or during a certain part of the day or certain part of the week. I think that's part of the dialogue as to what's acceptable to the commission and what might be acceptable to, um, C S I in terms of them spending the money to make this improvement. So I'll, I'll let them speak to what their ultimate request is.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. For the commission, I know Commissioner Perush, you've been very involved, uh, you know, with trying to support and, and help, uh, you know, remedy the concerns that some of the residents of Royal Oak Manor have had related to parking. Do you have any input out of the gate or any questions out of the gate? Sorry to put you on the spot. Sorry, Commissioner Perush, you're still on mute. There we go.
Um, in terms of this, the parking spaces that are there now, are those exclusively for the use of the manor? Or are they just because they're handicap spaces, a number of them? Um, it just by matter of just practice, mostly they are used by staff or visitors or residents of the Royal Oak Manor. They're not signed exclusively for the use of the manor now, correct? Or am I wrong?
Uh, my understanding that all the meters down there are open to the general public.
Okay. Um.
Any other questions for, oh, sorry, Commissioner Perush.
No, the only, the only other concern that I had is I know that there, um, is also in our materials, the results of the study that was done, I think in 2006. It shows that, um, the width of the street, because it's narrower there than it is in other parts of the downtown, isn't really adequate to handle, um, the design of the handicap parking, or not the handicap parking, but the angle parking. Um, and the suggestion would be that perhaps it could encroach further onto, uh, the property of the Royal Oak Manor in terms of the relocation of the sidewalk. But that's a design issue. That is, that goes perhaps on a second tier level of, of, of an issue as to how we angle the parking. If in fact we're interested in creating it and licensing it. So the threshold question I think is, is the one that you raised. It's whether or not we're comfortable with, with licensing, um, that particular area. And I have very mixed feelings on that right now. I'd like to hear the discussion.
Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from C S I, um, what their overall plans for parking are. It sounds like, this looks like a maximum of additional 10 spaces, um, which I think we know is not sufficient. But also it sounded like 10 wouldn't necessarily be possible, given, uh, the restrictions that we have on how these parking spaces are done. And I'm also curious if there is this, if there ends up being 16 spaces or they're doing, they're investing to put this money in, what they're expecting in terms of how many assigned spots we would assign to them? Like, are they saying this is only worth it to them if they get all of the spots assigned to them exclusively? What's how, what's their breakdown of that?
Commissioner Douglas?
I just want to point out that the planning commission has approved an apartment building on the southeast corner of Sixth and, um, what's the street? Williams. Um, so, I mean, as we look at parking demand in that area, I'm not necessarily interested in reserving all of those new parking spaces just for Royal Oak Manor when there will be, assuming the development moves forward, um, additional demand for parking in that area.
Any other comments from the commission or questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, I know we have some representatives from C S I here. I'll open it up for a few minutes to kind of bring us up to speed on your thoughts and maybe answer some of the questions that were posed from the commissioner comments. I see Miss, this is muted herself, so.
Good evening, Mayor Fournier and commissioners. My name is Diane Smith. I'm the National Finance and Development Manager for C S I. Um, for those of you who are not quite familiar who C S I is, we are a nonprofit developer and manager of strictly affordable senior housing. Um, we're headquartered in Warren and in the southeast Michigan area, we own 25 properties, um, about 3,200 units. Um, so we've been a member of the Royal Oak community since 1973, when, um, Royal Oak was, um, originally built. And what we're proposing here as part of this parking lot expansion is, is, um, in combination with the larger recapitalization of the project that we're doing right now. So we have a recapitaliz- recapitalization project, um, right now where we're going to invest, um, over $7.2 million in the upgrade of the facility. Um, and we're doing a variety of, um, a variety of capital improvements on the property to ma- to improve the, um, modernization of all the systems, all the units. And part of this is, um, that we're looking at is the site work. And parking, of course, has been a concern for years, um, for our residents. This is one thing that they wanted us to really look into, to see how we could accomplish that. Right now, we have 30 residents that can't park in our lot. We have 108 spots dedicated to Royal Oak Manor on the site. And then the parking lot we own across Williams Street. Um, and then 30 folks purchase a parking permit from the city of Royal Oak. And it's my understanding right now, they all park across the street on Main Street. One thing that we're doing is we're going to be able to reconfigure some of the lot, um, the existing lot that we own across Williams Street. And then, um, we are working with the railroad to license their land, the C N Railroad, so we can expand onto their land. And those two together, we're going to be able to add 18 spots. What we're proposing to do with the Williams Street angle parking is, um, we're pretty confident that we can, uh, working with the engineers, that we can figure out how safely that these spots can fit onto Williams Street. And we would spend all of our own money, C S I's own money, to build the spots. But for that, um, you know, we would like to license all of those spots. We think it's going to be between 14 and 16 by the time the engineering gets done. But we'd like to license all of those for the, the special use of only Royal Oak Manor residents.
Commissioner Macy?
So, um, sounds, I'm glad to hear that you're able to expand 18 just with the other. That's, that's fantastic. But that 14 to 16 you're talking about is inclusive of the six that exist there right now, right? You're not saying there's 14 to 16 new ones, you're saying?
Correct, correct.
And I also had a question for Commissioner Douglas about that apartment complex. Like, what was the parking plan for the complex that was just approved?
Got it. Um, I think we approved it at 1.5, um, uh, parking spaces per, uh, unit. But I'm just acknowledging that, you know, an apartment building in that area is going to have visitors and is going to have a need for some sort of on-street parking. Right now, what's available would be the parallel parking on the east side of Williams Street. Um, and then whatever spaces are available on, uh, Troy.
Anybody else? Any other questions for C S I? Sorry, my computer, my other screen just froze. I'm trying to get back to my map that I had. And it's not working. So, I'm going by memory here. So I guess my, so there's 30 parking spots that are, that you have 30 members of your Royal Oak community that require, um, parking across the street as far as permanent parking. So they walk across Main Street, they go to the lot there. Typically, I'd say most days a week, that lot doesn't have any, whole lot of vehicles in it. So I imagine their access is pretty direct. On weekends, it does fill up, um, and, you know, there could be, you know, areas that are, you know, they might have to walk a little further. But my understanding also is that one of the other issues is, um, senior priority, or not necessarily meaning seniors, but, you know, if you've lived there longer, uh, it's hard for you to move up in the, in the people that are disabled and require parking close to the, um, facility, uh, get a priority and they get to park in the lot, um, in front of the facility.
Um, I, I'm sorry, you were, you were cutting out a bit, but, um, um, I'll answer your question. If, and if I don't answer what especially we, what you asked for, just tell me. So you are correct. There is, we are required, if somebody presents a reasonable accommodation from a medical professional, that they need a closer spot, they get moved to the top of the list. And so effectively, really what happens is the, the spots in the lots are really almost reserved for those folks that have a reasonable accommodation.
And the addition of the, I think I wrote down here, 14 to 16, no, was it 18 spots near the railroad tracks? You know, that's certainly going to help with the waitlist issues that you have with people that move in and it takes maybe three or four years. If they're, if they don't need any sort of accommodation, they could be on that waitlist for a number of years before the ability to park on site. So with the additional 18 spots, imagine that's going to, you know, ramp up those on the waitlist. Uh, and your, your waits will be much shorter, uh, not hours, but maybe months or, or a year or two. Your residents having to park in the lot and not having to wait as long to get a spot that's outside the lot, correct?
Hmm, correct. And, and we're really hoping that once those 18 new spots open up, that it really will cut down on, um, you know, really wipe out those folks that are on the reasonable accommodation list.
So one of the things I always wonder about as well is I know that the people, when you're maxed out on parking, if you want to have a vehicle, you have to go to the city and buy a permit, right? And is it up to that individual to pay the city for that permit? Or do you charge every parker a certain, you know, like $2 fee, uh, you know, to park their vehicle at Royal Oak Manor? And, you know, that subsidizes the cost of those who have, you know, less advantageous parking. How does that work? Do you just say parking's free if you're within the boundaries and sorry about it? If you, you know, came here later, you gotta pay the city for your permit. You try to spread that cost and incentivize people like, hey, you know, you can avoid paying the $2 a month or $5 a month if you want to park in the lot. You do anything like that to help, you know, mitigate some of the concerns with, you know, people that have a need and people that, you know, are more than willing to walk.
So, um, we have looked at, um, you know, we've been looking at this issue for quite a few years and trying to resolve the issue. And, um, And, um, we, um, one of our goals was to start charging for parking and HUD would not allow us to do that. Right now, the building is financed by HUD, so HUD has to approve all of our budgets, you know, anything that we want to do. That was one, one of our ideas was to charge a nominal fee. Um, you know, and that would give incentive for some folks that, you know, maybe it was time to give up a car. Um, you know, having, having a vehicle is certainly a big independence, independence, independence issue for seniors. Um, and for a few years, the building did pay for folks and their parking, their parking permits, but it got to a point where the building just couldn't afford it anymore. So at, a few years ago, then residents were required to buy their own parking spots that were outside of the lot. So if you were lucky enough to get a spot in the lot, it was included in your rent. And if you weren't lucky enough, then you had to pay for your own parking spot. Um, it's my understanding, there's a church, um, that has donated some money to help offset the cost of those parking permits for some, some of our folks. Um, but, so those are some of the things that we've been working on. Um, we have been working with our members a lot, just trying to educate them on other alternative transportation sources so that they may not need a vehicle anymore. I mean, we all know Royal Oak is an extremely walkable community. And, um, you know, we've been educating them on Uber, Zip Cars, um, you know, and that sort of thing. And that's been taking some time, um, you know, to get them comfortable with that. Um, so we are, you know, we are working on some issues. Um, one of the other, um, things that we're working on is through part of this larger project. Um, we were lucky enough to get a three-point-four-million-dollar federal home grant from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority to, to do this big project. Um, and part of that, we're hoping that we're going to be able to buy a van that's dedicated for the use of our members. So we're hoping that's really going to alleviate some of these parking issues that we have.
So, and, and what's the main concern among your residents? Is it the thirty-dollar fee or is it the not having parking? Or not thirty-dollar fee, whatever the, the permit fee is, I can't remember the exact amount, is it the fee? Or is it the, um, the fact that they have to walk, you know, thirty yards farther to get to their parking spot on most occasions? What, what have you heard generally as the feedback?
Um, I would say most of it has been finding a spot that's close enough that is, it's easy for them to walk.
Okay, and your spots are signed at the facility right now, are they? They're not assigned?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Right now on the property, are your parking spots assigned or is it first come, first served with them?
They, they are assigned, so every parking spot is assigned to a, a specific member.
Okay. Commissioner Macy?
First of all, I love how you're being innovative and coming up with some new solutions to this problem. I just, I thought of another question now that I'm looking at it on my map. Um, you said you thought you were going to be able to work with engineering to get probably fourteen to sixteen spaces in this. Was that maintaining it as a two-way street or would it be one-way if you had, if you did that?
You know, our goal would be to, to maintain, maintain that as a two-way street. And we realized that we were going to have to encroach into our, our property line and move the sidewalk, but we think it's, it's doable.
Okay. It seems very, seems very reasonable to me that all the additional spaces that you're creating could be reserved for Royal Oak Manor. I think where we're going to, the, the point we're going to start having debate on is whether or not those six existing spots, uh, would be permit parking Royal, Royal Oak Manor or if those would continue to be metered, maybe for visitors to the Manor as well, which I know would not solve the entire problem, but just, just guessing, that's where we're going to see the disagreement.
Hmm, I, well, I think that's sort of my first instinct is to say, okay, what's the out-of-the-gate numbers fairness? And to me, because currently right now, Mr. Twing, correct me if I'm wrong, we are allowing some sort of permits to be in and out of the Royal Oak Manor area on the street, correct?
I would say Chief O'Donohue should answer that question because he's coordinating it.
You know what, Chief O'Donohue, you are, your hand has been blocked by a pop-up note that has come. So I'm sorry about that, I didn't see that you had your hand.
That's okay. Um, I just point out, we do have, um, seven residents who don't have a parking in the back, but have, uh, um, some pretty substantial mobility issues and we allow them to park on Williams at the meters. Um, without, they don't, they don't feed the meter, they just park there. They've got a special permit if they've been identified.
Okay. So, and that's part of the thirty number, Miss Smith, imagine, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's my understanding.
So, you know, I mean, I think for me, you know, uh, hold on a second, Commissioner Douglas, I, I saw your hand. Uh, is that, you know, certainly for the incremental spaces, if this is something we do, um, and the investment is made by the Manor, um, and it feels equitable by the commission, I see, you know, possibility of, you know, maybe allowing those to be dedicated. Um, the six that are there right now, I mean, one can argue that they're already being used by seven of the people that are, that are there at the, the meters. But I also think, you know, this is part of our downtown and they're going to be visitors and circulation is important. And, you know, maybe, you know, a potential is that those other spots can, you can still use a Royal Oak Manor permit, uh, if you can get one there, um, but it's not necessarily those six. It could still, someone wanted to park and go to the, the church like St. Paul Lutheran and walk up and, and pick up their kid or something, they could still park there or something. Um, you know, to me, I think that, that way we're not taking away, uh, spots away from people that may be using them today that aren't, you know, because there's more than just the Royal Oak Manor in that street, in that area, using that part. Um, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, um, Smith would, how many people with limited, uh, mobility are on your waiting list? And, and would these new spaces be eaten up by people who need to be close, still leaving others to, to have to park across the street?
Um, that I, I can't answer exactly, of the thirty folks that are on the waiting list, I can't answer exactly who is waiting for that reasonable accommodation. Um, I would guess that it's the majority of the folks, um, would needs, you know, would need to, to, that, that they are on that reasonable accommodation list.
Well, Commissioner, I'll just add that you have the eighteen that they plan to do as well over by the railroad, plus let's say these ten, that's twenty-eight spots close to the thirty. Sorry, Commissioner Douglas, just to remind you.
So, so the people who are now parking across Main Street, some of them are also, um, uh, struggling because they have lower mobility?
That's my impression.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if you take the math with part of this investment that you're making, you get eighteen spots by the railroad and you would get, you know, ten to sixteen here, you know, that's eighteen, that's twenty-eight or thirty-four, depending on how you look at it, right? You're still within that thirty range, whether you get ten or you get fourteen to sixteen, you know? So you are alleviating that problem, knowing that there's probably a couple of people that, you know, maybe newcomers that don't have mobility issues can, you know, if they can't get a spot there, uh, from time to time, they'd have to park over in the other lot. And maybe that permit is valid for the lot or those metered spots. Ninety-five percent of the time, those spots will probably be open at night. Um, the times, you know, uh, may not be, and that's the luck of the draw. Uh, Commissioner Dubac, I saw your hand up.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. You know, we've been talking about this for a long time. I think this is a, a pretty reasonable, uh, solution, a positive step for residents that do need some, some assistance there. Um, and we talk a lot about what we can do to make, uh, accommodations or plan for aging in place and making sure that, uh, seniors can live independently and enjoy everything our community has, dawf. And I know we've been struggling with this situation, trying to figure out where the boundaries of what we can offer up to private residents are. Um, so I think now that you have the building, building management offering to put in, you know, the work to, you know, incur the expense of establishing those new spaces, um, I think it's appropriate to, to allow those to be licensed to residents. I think, Mayor, you offer a, a reasonable compromise in saying that the six spaces that currently exist, allowing them to be, um, eligible for the passes, for those who have passes from the Manor, while letting them be available to the public maybe for certain hours.
And I think down the road, if we find that those spots are, you know, if it's not an issue, great. If it's becoming a, a, a problem, uh, then we can reevaluate and see if we can license those extra sticks, uh, to the Manor if, if need be. Um, I think we can take this in steps, you know what I mean? Like if they're there, you know, we make a, a good, fair, balanced argument to everybody in the neighborhood, but putting a prioritized nature on the need of the, the seniors in the senior center, at the same time, there probably shouldn't be any issues, but in the event one or two pop up, we can circle back afterward and say, okay, well, those six need to, you know, be dedicated to the Manor. Um, you know, we can make that decision, uh, you know, as a second lever if we need to. And if not, we can keep circulation, keep the, um, people of Royal Oak Manor happy and, and achieve many goals at the same stroke. Uh, Commissioner Macy?
I'm just, I just want to check and make sure I understand what you're suggesting. Um, so those, the six spots that are currently there, six, six of the new ones would be metered spots that they, that the Manor residents have had a permit could park there without paying the meter? Is that what you're saying or is that not what you're saying? Yes, okay, gotcha.
And, or whatever permit they have would work, a hybrid permit, it would work in the lot or it would work in those six spots. You know, so if that happened to be like a crazy situation and they got to park, you know, like one day a year, you know, in the lot or a couple of days because there's some, I don't know, party going on or celebration or something, you know? And of course, the, the Manor would prioritize, you know, the dedicated spots, uh, for the, for the residents that need it and then the undedicated based on whatever formula they want, need, seniority, whatever it may be. And then down the road, if it's still problematic, fully open to, you know, um, seeing if those spots could be converted over to the Manor. But I think preemptively doing it, I think definitely doing the work, get any additional ten spots. We, you know, we don't have those spots today, we can dedicate on their dime, we can dedicate those to them. Keep the six, see how it goes. If it's still a problem, then we convert those six over. If it's not, and we can keep the entire neighborhood happy with a, a couple of spots for visitors and circulation and it's of no impact, nine out of ten times, uh, ninety-nine out of a hundred times, you know, why not try that first? Commissioner Macy?
I like your proposal, Mayor. Um, I'm wondering if there's any kind of a time limit on this? Like if, you know, we reevaluate ten years down the road? I know there's been a lot of talk about how transportation is changing and the needs are changing. And I, I think what you're proposing is a good idea and I'm wondering if we should reevaluate at some period of time to see if the spots have been gone empty, have gone empty or if there's different needs.
Yeah, I think that a reasonable depreciation schedule that, you know, CSI could come into with an agreement with the city. You know, we've done that in the past where people make improvements and if for whatever reason, you know, something happens, um, where maybe they want to get, maybe they want to un, they want to undo their agreement, you know, but I, I, I think it's got to be somewhat long-term so they can plan. But, you know, it doesn't have to be a lifetime forever, um, you know? And, and then also we have all those issues with maintenance and upkeep and, you know, all the things that we see pop out of the design that will have to be part of that agreement. But I think, you know, having a period where we can, as partners, reevaluate, is it still necessary? Uh, and talk about what that means for each party, uh, I think is okay. Bruce?
Um, I, I think the term of the agreement is something that's going to be very important, just as you said. It's going to have to be, um, they're going to have to have the right to park in those spaces long enough so that their investment makes sense. Because it's going to be a financial investment to improve and to create those spaces. So you don't want to have an agreement that after just a year, you have the opportunity, the city has the opportunity to whip those spaces away for whatever reason. But on the other hand, you don't want the agreement to go on forever because so much can change in the next, you know, two years, five years, ten years. I don't know what that magic number is. Um, I guess I would let it to the city and to CSI to negotiate the length of that agreement, that license agreement before it's reviewed by the city, I, again, to see whether or not it continues. Um, but I, I think, um, it, it should not be a forever thing. And I know license agreements typically are drafted in such a way so that either party can say, I want out of it right now. Um, but I, I think, on the other hand though, CSI is going to want some assurances in there that the city doesn't have the authority to do that after a year, that they've invested a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in a bunch of spaces. So I think a term is appropriate if you were to go into this kind of an agreement. I just don't know what that magic number is, but I'm sure the city and CSI can work that out.
Commissioner Levaser?
Uh, I'm going to go on the presumption that city staff has a pretty good idea of where the commission is coming from right now. And I'm going to move for adoption of the resolution as presented.
Is there a second? And by Commissioner Macy, discussion? Commissioner Dubac?
Uh, Mayor, I don't believe, does the resolution as proposed by staff incorporate allowing the use of some public use of the current six spaces or not?
Mayor, Mayor, I'm comfortable with, I, I'm comfortable with the resolution, uh, as written and as suggested by Commissioner Levaser. I think the commission has expressed the idea that we want staff to include certain terms in there and we'll draft those in discussions with CSI, uh, in Mr. Gillum's office and we'll bring a draft back to you, uh, at a future meeting.
Okay, so those elements that we discussed tonight would be incorporated when you bring it back and then we would, you know, give the thumbs up or thumbs down based on what you're able to work with CSI with?
Correct, or even some minor adjustments at that point.
Okay, okay, yeah. And I think more information you're going to learn and more discussion will happen and, you know, the physical design of it may lead to different looks and ideas that you guys can present back to us, so. Um, all right, um, well, Miss Smith, thank you for taking the time out of your, um, you know, evening to be with us. Uh, we got a motion on the table, which is positive here. Uh, I saw Commissioner Macy, she, she had her hand up.
Yeah, it just occurred to me that maybe I missed my chance to ask this question from Miss Smith, but, um, I'm super excited to see this in front of us. I think Commissioner Dubac mentioned this has been a long time coming. This has been an issue that we've been aware of my entire time on the commission. Um, and so to have CSI come with not only one, but multiple overlapping solutions that hopefully will get this, um, problem solved is fantastic. And so what I was going to ask is if, what's the timeline? When, when will we see this done? But I don't know.
So, um, so, um, we got all of our financing approvals through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority and we got those last month. And, um, pre-virus, we were planning on starting this summer. Um, we're still shooting just to start later on this fall. Um, what we're working on now as a company and with our contractor is that, um, to get some construction protocol in place that's going to make it as safe as we can for those residents because, you know, we're, we're doing tenant-in-place rehab where we're going in and working on tenants' apartments. And, um, so we just need to make sure that everybody is kept extremely safe. So that's what we're working on right now. Um, we are going in front of the planning commission in June to get, um, our final site plan approval. Um, it doesn't include the William Street parking, of course. Um, it doesn't include the railroad parking either because the city wanted us to get the license agreement, um, with the railroad first. So we'll probably do our site plan in a two-phase. Um, so hopefully if all goes well, we're going to be starting construction yet this fall.
Very good. Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I'm just going to point out that by approving this, we are, um, losing five mature trees on William Street. Um, and I'm assuming that when this comes to the planning commission, we of course will make sure that they comply with our rules that say any trees removed have to be replaced double, but that's still on what is now a, a nice shady street, very pleasant place for walking, is going to be pretty bare when this is all said and done.
Some of your residents on that side may want to consider as well, Miss Smith.
Yeah, we, we, uh, planned, uh, you know, we wanted to see how today went. Um, and, you know, see if, um, the city would support this idea. Um, and then we intend to talk to the residents about it because we're, we're fully aware that we were going to have to lose those trees to be able to. because we're, we're fully aware that we were going to have to lose those trees to be able to, to do that. And we do have a landscape and landscape architect that we use that will put in some really nice, if this all does go forward, that we put in some really nice trees around the building.
Commissioner Macy. Okay, anybody else? All right, we have a motion on the table. I'll just add that, you know, hopefully we've hit the peak of parking. And down the road, when it comes time for, you know, people younger than me, you know, move into Royal Oak Manor and other facilities, that, you know, the technology and the acceptance of various alternative modes of transportation and, you know, third-party providers and all of that will have been ingrained in us for decades. And, you know, I'm, I'm actually looking forward to a day where I don't have to drive anymore. I love being in the auto industry because I know we're making lots of progress on autonomous vehicles and shared services and all of that. So, you know, I think we'll, hopefully we've hit our peak and we won't have to revisit this in 30 years again. And that, you know, maybe you'll be coming to us saying, hey, I want out of this license agreement. Can we make it a part? Uh, which will be a really great thing, so.
That would be good, yeah.
All right, well, I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to start with Commissioner Douglas.
Hi.
I vote yes. Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
Okay, that's a round of kisses and thank you again, CSI, Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Look forward to seeing what proposal you and our planning staff come up with.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, that brings us to item number 13, Mr. Twins on a Roll, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act Funding Update.
Well, this was in front of the commission previously. You had some questions and you asked staff to go back and research it. I've asked Mr. Murphy to come tonight from the planning staff because he's had direct contact with most of the organizations. So I would like Joe to walk through real briefly the presentation for you and what he's found out. And then we'll handle any questions you may have.
Mr. Murphy.
Good evening. This, as, as Tim had noted, at the April 27th meeting, you had honed in on four activities, those being, that you thought would be of interest based on the list of eligible activities that are available. Well, the four activities being emergency food distribution, hotel vouchers in lieu of the, for homeless individuals in lieu of the fact that shelters are closed due to social distancing measures, a rent or slash mortgage assistance program, and a small business assistance program. I did reach out to several different social service organizations regarding food emergency, hotel vouchers, and rental or mortgage assistance, and to get an understanding from them of the types of needs that people are approaching them with. And also to gain an understanding of what services they are currently providing and what their organizational capacity is to provide additional services. As you well know, many nonprofit organizations are providing a whole host of services far above the normal capacity because there's that increased demand for all different levels of service. So I did reach out to several organizations and had conversations with them. I do have for your, for your input in determining which activities and potential funding levels that you would like to associate with those activities. If you would like, I can indicate to you each of the activities and some what are believed to be general costs associated with those based on the level of input from that activity. Now, I will say that if you do decide to pick several public service activities and establish general dollar amounts associated with it, or in this case, in the motion of percentage of the total. Staff will finalize the guidelines, or rather, the application that we've been working on. And we'll distribute that application in the next day or two to many different social service agencies so that they can respond to the city's request indicating which act, which of those activities they may be interested in partnering with the city to provide that service and what their fees would be for those services. So with that, I, if, if it's acceptable, I'd like to go through the four, the three public service activities to give you what, what I believe is my understanding at this point in time of where we stand.
Please do so, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, with emergency food distribution, as you're aware, there are, there have been several organizations that have been conducting for, a distribution of free food to city residents. That is an eligible activity with the community of own block grant programs that we're receiving from the CARES Act. Organizations develop a box or a set of food products and maybe some cleaning products, toilet paper associated with that, depending on what's included in the box and how many people that provides food for and whatever the duration of time is. If we use an estimation, we'll say, just for sake of trying to come up with a dollar amount, if you so choose to proceed forward with allocating funds for free food distribution. Let's say we put a dollar value of $70 a box for a nonprofit group to, to put together, procure food, and distribute it at a central site at a one-day event. At $70, and if we distributed 500 boxes at an event, that's approximately $35,000 for one event. If we, if the box of food lasted two weeks and we wanted to do that every two weeks, you can have an understanding that it would cost us approximately $70,000 a month of these funds in order to be able to continue to do that as long as you see fit. The various organizations that I did talk to indicated that that seemed to be the most immediate need, the one that was quickest to implement and has the low, the lowest administrative involvement to, to occur. The, another activity that you'd honed in on, on your April 27th meeting was providing hotel vouchers for, for Royal Oak residents who have become homeless due to the effects of COVID-19. They've lost their job, they've lost their residence. Several of the organizations that I did speak to indicated that they have not seen a dramatic increase. Luckily, at this point in time, we haven't seen a dramatic increase in the need in Royal Oak coming from Royal Oak residents for, for that service. If, if that was provided, generally speaking, a cost estimate associated with that, I'm guessing is probably somewhere between $5,000 to $7,000 to provide a family, a small family with two months of a hotel vouchers, three meals a day for each individual, and a social service agency providing them case management so that they can get, find, find a place to reside, maybe help them get a job and be self-sufficient. A mortgage, you'd also ask for staff to research a rental assistance or mortgage assistance program. There's been quite an injection of federal funding to prevent displacement of people from their place of residence with the one-time direct house payments, uh, uh, payments to households. That's occurred, the extension and the increase in unemployment benefits, people being able to contact their mortgage holder to defer those payments to later. Addiction prevention, student loan deferment, the payroll protection program. A lot of those have helped keep people in their place of residence at this point in time. So many of the organizations have indicated that they haven't seen an increase in people being displaced. That is a good thing, and hopefully that doesn't increase. It is something that's very challenging to administer. There's a lot of federal regulations associated with that, most notably being, if, if it was a rental assistance program. HUD only allows the funds to be utilized to pay what it refers to as a fair market rent value, for instance, for a two-bedroom apartment. And the fair market rent value is a certain dollar threshold. Where most Royal Oak apartments rent at a much higher dollar threshold than that. There's that gap, that difference between what we're allowed to pay for with HUD funds and what the actual market in Royal Oak is demanding, there's that gap. And we would need to find an organization to partner with, partnership, have a partnership with that had the funding, an alternative funding source to fill that gap in order to be able to assist, what I'm guessing is a majority of our residents based on the market value of rental apartments in the city. Mortgage assistance is a little different animal. I haven't had, that doesn't mean that it, it doesn't exist, but I haven't come across a social service agency that has a lot of experience with the mortgage assistance program. The county has a mortgage assistance program. They've also received a larger share of CARES Act funds to be able to increase that level of service to owner, homeowners within the county. And of course, that does include Royal Oak residents. Those are the three public service activities. The last activity that you had discussed was a small business assistance program. And staff would be able to administer that. We would do that, we'll say, in-house versus sending out an application for public service agencies to see if they would be willing to partner with us on the first three that we discussed. So what we're looking for today is for the commission to discuss those activities once again. Come up with a percentage or dollar amount that you believe could be associated with those activities. Then the next steps would be, we would send out an application to public service agencies, have a quick turnaround time, and we would develop, staff would develop the necessary documentation, federal documentation to bring back to you the list of activities that we're going to, and the dollar, associated dollar amounts that we're going to spend our CARES Act funding on. City commission would hold a public hearing based on the responses that we get from the distribution of applications to social service agencies. There still is time for you to change the dollar thresholds associated with the activities. And even some of the activities, you could add or delete activities in the near future. So you'll have the opportunity to do so. We'd also want to package on that same agenda entering into contract with social service agencies based on their response to our application. And we finally, staff would bring to you guidelines and application for small business assistance program. You would have the opportunity to review that application and the guidelines modified as you see fit. And then staff would afterward distribute that and begin implementing that program as well.
I see Commissioner Levaser and then Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, the, the 10% for testing efforts, is that recommendation still your recommendation as well?
We did know in the report that there's been a very large increase in federal dollars associated with testing. This, the city may be well advised to use these funds for other activities other than testing due to that very large increase in dollar amount associated with testing. That's not to say that you, you can't if you don't, if you choose to do so. But as you may well be aware, there's been a very large increase in federal funding for testing throughout the entire country.
If, if we were to lower this percentage, what, what dollar figure, what percentage might be appropriate given the availability of other sources for testing funds?
I'm not exactly certain, and we would have to think of how we would want to use the funds for the testing. We wanted to be very specific in approaching how we utilize our funds for testing or if they're very generic in nature. I'd need to do more research on that in order to give you a very clear answer. If you do want to set aside funding for testing, we'll certainly work to make that happen.
Okay, if, if I understood you correctly, the, the demand or need for homeless assistance works out to about 1% of the overall, overall grant here. Are you able to put a number or percentage on the rental and the mortgage assistance and what the demand or need is there?
I, I don't, I would hesitate to provide you with any exact dollar amount or percent. We will certainly know once we get the applications back, if there even are agencies interested in providing that type of service for the city. A lot of these agencies have been overtaxed with the increased demand for, I'll say, even the most basic and direct, immediate need of providing food to people. So whether they have the administrative capacity to, to implement a rental assistance program, that, that may be challenging. They may be focused on, on other things at this point in time. If you, I, I'll come back to the point of, if you would like to set aside a percentage or a dollar amount to it, we'll include that in the application that we send out. So the agencies, agencies have an idea of what the city commission would like, the activities and the dollar amounts, what they think they would like to spend the money on. If we get responses that come back to us that indicate that no agency is interested in one particular activity, but they're all very interested in another, you will have that opportunity to adjust at that next step, the activities or the dollar amounts that you see fit based on their responses.
Is that, is that fairly easy to make that adjustment, or is it going to create some issues?
No, I would say you can make that adjustment on the fly at the, at the next meeting. Because we'll have to, we'll have to hold a public hearing. And before you make a motion to adopt an amendment to the annual action plan, which includes activities and dollar thresholds, you can make that change at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, just a quick question before I go to Commissioner Macy. If we were to, under the small business amounts, if we wanted to reimburse small businesses for testing their employees, would we have to mark that as testing? Or could that all be, you know, administered through the assistance program under the small business category? Meaning that, you know, if the county has ramped up testing all over and we're getting federal dollars and, you know, we say, okay, well, part of the small business, there's going to be a cost to testing their employees and we want them to test their employees because it's, you know, healthy for everybody else. Is that something that you could, you could pay for out of that bucket? Or would it have to be specific testing?
No, wouldn't have, it would not have to be specific. One of the nice things about the HUD's regulations associated with providing business, businesses with financial assistance is it's very open-ended. We can provide them funding so that they can cover a wide variety of capital costs from payroll to rent to purchasing equipment to a whole wide variety. Now, there is a, while HUD allows for a wide variety of activities to, for the funds to be spent on, HUD has very specific guidelines in, in terms of the requirements, the data that they need to provide, provide back to us. But if we provided them a lump sum of, of a dollar amount, they would be able to utilize it for whatever they see fit associated with keeping operational and most importantly, retaining their existing employees. That's where the federal guidelines all fall back to. They need to demonstrate to us that they're utilizing the funds and they're keeping their employees and reporting those statistics back to us. And we in turn report them to HUD.
Okay.
So whatever, whatever helps them stay operational and be successful.
So we could say, hey, if you're going to get a grant that we require that, you know, it, it covers the incremental costs of PPE, like personal protection equipment and the increased cost of testing. So you and then can keep, you don't have an additional expense that you therefore can keep your employees employed. By not, you know, having that additional expense, we could, could we put those qualifications on some of that money?
Yes, you, yes, the city certainly could do that in any agreement that we are, we have with them. You can set a wide variety of parameters.
Sorry, Commissioner Macy.
Um, so first of all, Mr. Murphy, I'm really thrilled with this report. I appreciate that you Um so first of all, Mister Murphy, I'm really thrilled with this report, I appreciate that you laid out. These various possibilities and then gave us a sense of the need that you feel is out there and the. Uh level of administrative support that exists and whether or not we would be able to plug in pretty easily or would require a lot of work. That's really, really helpful to think about this in the way that you've laid it out. Um and I remain really interested in the rental and the mortgage assistance programs. I think the need is definitely there, I appreciate what you're saying that there has been funds that have been distributed and there's been a lot of um. Kind of deferment of some of some of the, some things that are coming due for a lot of individuals, but. Deferring these does not mean that they go away forever and as we move through time and if. If we lose this additional money coming in for unemployment. And we lose this eviction protection that's in place right now, I think we're gonna find a lot of families are struggling to meet their obligations. After several months of um. Not not getting the funds that they're used to coming in. So I I remain really interested in that, I want to ask about the uh you said, you say, we're saying because of the um. Fair rental value, fair market value of the rentals that Royal Oak is tends to be above that number. Um and that we wouldn't be able to provide assistance unless we provided that full amount and we'd have to get matching. I want to make sure I understood that, I feel like I I've. When I worked, uh when I was doing legal aid work before and I worked with a lot of families to get benefits. Sometimes these grants would only come through if they could show that they could make the portion of their payment to make the full payment, in other words, they wouldn't make a partial payment if then it would still. Not cover the rent, but if the rent. If they, if the renter could pay part of it, it could show they could pay part of it and then the grant would. Make made it up to that amount, it would be acceptable, so I wanted to clarify. Is that the case for this as well?
That's correct, that's correct, that 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 gap needs to be filled some way, shape or form. Yes, if someone's able to provide a certain amount of their income or savings to to make that difference, certainly capable of doing that.
Okay, so I mean, I love what you sort of throw out there for us is that we can put percentages that we think. Uh like kind of our ideal percentages out today and then see what we get back from the social services agencies in terms of. What they can handle in administration and what they can use for these funds. And then if it turns out that we're wrong and there's not enough ability to get these funds distributed, we can adjust um on the fly. Especially because it seems like we're able to do the small business part pretty much at house. Um which means that we can shift there pretty easily if we need to do. That, um I also want to ask one more question about the businesses, I I can't remember if you said this, but I saw in the letter. Um that there is no double dipping. In a matter of speaking for the federal funds, so if they're getting federal funds from some one of these other programs, they wouldn't be eligible for this. Do you have any sense of how many that is in the city, like who, if there are a lot that are not able to get those funds that would be using this and using from us?
I don't, I don't have any. Way to gauge that at this point in time. The payroll protection program, depending on when someone was issued the funds um lasts, we'll say for so long. And if they're unable to renew that or come up with another uh federal source to to. Assist them further afterward. That's when CDBG can can start to take over that assisting them. So we would have a, and in the application, we would certainly have it. Set up where any business that wanted to apply would inform us of. Which federal programs they've already taken advantage of and whether they're still um operating under that. Funding. Or if they're seeking new, a new source in order to be able to continue to survive. Uh operate and provide employment for their low to moderate income employees. So you, I, we would have, we would most definitely have assurances in place, the application, they would have to identify it, but in the contract with them. They would have to attest um that they are not. Your term of of saying double dipping. We we would have assurances certainly to cover that.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
In that same, uh yes, in that same vein, um Mister Murphy, your paragraph about small business assistance says. If local small businesses do not have access to an SBA loan or the payroll production program funding. Um does that, when you say do not have access, does that mean they're in in? They're ineligible or if, does it mean if they haven't been able to obtain that funding?
Well, I would say both of those and if it runs out.
Ah, right, okay.
So I think there are three, at least three scenarios come to mind, those three scenarios. By by the time, if if you, if the commission does decide to. Implement a small business program. By the time it's approved. And we distribute an application, start taking applications in, reviewing them. And I'll say, start right, entering contracts and start writing checks. We're looking perhaps into sometime in July, uh if we start. Issuing funds for them to be able to cover operational costs for August. Some of those. Programs that we're referring to, the small, different small business uh. Loans, the paycheck protection program, those may have already reached their uh limit.
Okay, and then following up on uh Commissioner Macy's useful information about rental support programs or mortgage support programs. It seems like that information or or that need will be further down the road, um when do we have to spend this money?
The. Obviously, there's a certain sense of urgency in spending the money and we would like to. Uh expedite it as as quickly as possible. However, we do want to be wise in how we allocate the funds to make sure. That people who are in need several two, three months from now might have the ability to to get some financial assistance, so. Technically, uh HUD has provided an expenditure deadline date, I think of September, if I remember correctly, September the thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Where where. The uh the uh the. Everyone is interested in implementing programs and assisting people as quickly as possible. So uh I I would hesitate to. Continue to have something operational more than six or eight months from now. Uh that I I I believe and hopefully this, the city commission concurs that. We can come up with a way to help people as quickly as possible. If there are other rounds of funding in the future, we can, we'll say reassess what the needs are in the future. And determine how best to allocate future funds to future needs. Uh we we hope that there's, there are additional funds in the, in the future, but uh. I would like to see if we're able to help people with a rental or mortgage assistance, mortgage assistance program, that that. Happened within six months.
So you've reinforced my belief that to me, the two uh strongest. Possibilities here are emergency food distribution and small business assistance. Um the food distribution because we're in a position, we're we're in a boots-on-the-ground position. I mean, we could implement that money very quickly and and feed hungry children. And the SBA program or the, I'm sorry, the the CDBG Business Funds Program is appealing. Because we can administer at local, you know, within the city, again, uh it's very expedient, we can act very quickly. And it supplements our, I mean, I would like to see us focus it outside the CBD, since the CBD has already implemented its own business funding program. This lets us extend support to businesses outside the CBD, which is an inquiry we've received and are the correspondence that we as commissioners get, so that, that would be where I'm leaning.
Commissioner Purush and then Commissioner Duba.
Um I was gonna mirror Commissioner Douglas's suggestions, um I was really um. Uh moved by the statement in this memo that says local organizations identified the most immediate and foreseeable need as the distribution of free food. And that to me speaks to the immediate um. Severe downside impact on families and people uh from this whole situation. Um there, the the difficulty families are having just putting food on the table, I think is is extreme. Given the situation, given their economic situation, given. Uh their inability to to travel as much as they used to in terms of acquiring food. Acquiring food that is um reasonable in terms of expense. And given the fact that the cost of food is rising just because of the supply chain problems that we've all are aware of. So to me, the top of my list in terms of priorities is providing that food assistance because it's immediate. It is life-saving, it is protective of health, which is part of our job. And um it makes everything else a little bit more um. Manageable, if anything is manageable these days, in terms of being able to handle the other economic impacts of this whole crisis. So to me, the top of my list would be the distribution of food and allocating resources to that particular category. Um and the second is also is the small business assistance. Um because I've seen, um and we've all heard about um the downtown program and how that has. Been kind of a lifeline for a lot of businesses, um that has been able to keep them going. Um they may not necessarily be open, but at least they're not closed, they're not shutting down their business. They're waiting for a time when they can reopen and reopen their doors to the public. And then it's been kind of a lifeline for them. Um but it's only within the downtown area and there's a lot of other businesses that could use that assistance in the community. I think we'd have to be very careful and set out the same kind of guidelines that the Downtown Development Authority has. Uh to make sure it's going to the businesses that really are in need, whether it's limiting them in terms of the number of employees they have. Um I would not, for example, expect somebody like Meyer to apply for assistance. But on the other hand, there are enough small businesses um within the community outside of the small business district that I think are. Definitely, definitely struggling and could use some assistance. So in terms of the priorities here. Um it's hard to say that that one is better than another because the need is there for everything. But I think in terms of the immediate need, the immediate need of getting people to stay healthy and and. Get the food that they need, that's the number one priority and keeping businesses' doors open. Uh they don't have the resources necessarily that homeowners have now in terms of mortgage assistance and deferral of payments and. Foreclosure, suspensions and so on for a while. Um but the the businesses are are really struggling, so I would like to see. Another priority of the funds uh be that. And that's it.
Commissioner Duba?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mister Murphy, for um this report, this is really helpful and exactly um aligned with the conversation that we had last time this was brought up. Um. Couple of things, if, so even with food distribution, I know you're saying that it's readily apparent and that there's organizations that could get on it right away, we would still have to issue an an RFP. Uh to distribute dollars for food distribution, is that right?
Correct, that's correct.
So um I I agree that that's the most um. Pressing need, but I I'm still very interested in in some of the housing and rental assistance. Um I do support the small business program. I think the uh the percentages is really the conversation we were having last time and 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 I think the question that you're asking us, right? Um. Uh on the small business program, uh it's been mentioned, you know, the DDA program, do we have the ability to restrict that? If not, so only businesses outside the DDA, the very least prioritize businesses that have not received DDA funds. Not federal funds, so there's not a federal restriction there, but can we restrict it?
The the city does have the ability to. Add whatever uh restrictions, limitations. That that you see fit. Whether it's businesses defining, we define small businesses, so whatever that threshold is under fifty, under twenty-five. The only thing that has to apply in order to utilize the federal funds. Is that the major, every business that we provide funding to, the majority of their employees that they're retaining have to. Be of low to, come from low to moderate income households. That this, we would require the business to provide us with data. Indicating who was on their payroll at a certain point before COVID nineteen. The onset of COVID nineteen and through the pandemic into the near future. Where we would be able to aggregate and report to HUD. How many low to moderate income jobs we were able to retain because of the funds that we distributed in terms of. Who we distribute the funds to, how we operate our program, how much we give. All of those are items that we set the parameters for.
So and that speaks, I think, a bit to, you know, what, the ten percent of the fee on our end, because that sounds like there'll be pretty heavy administrative work. To verify each of those businesses, their employees' income level and things like that.
It's worth it.
Yes. Okay, so I know you're looking for um some idea of percentages, so what I would recommend is um. Between food uh and housing, so uh uh you know, hotel vouchers and mortgage assistance. Make that thirty percent with no less than fifteen percent going to food distribution. Um so meaning if, yeah, the applications come in, it's overwhelming food, great, um like you said, there's not necessarily a lot of providers that are. Buy the the homeless and the mortgage assistance, but I do want them to have a chance to apply so we can vet whether or not there are worthwhile services we should be investing in. Um and then the remaining uh sixty percent less our our ten percent admin fee go to the small business. I believe that's a hundred percent.
That's very helpful, I, and I think that's general enough, yet specific enough. For us to highlight in an ad, in an application to these organizations so that they have an understanding of what we're looking for. As you had stated, based on their responses, we can tweak the activities and dollar amounts.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Duba broke up there, I couldn't hear his percentages.
I couldn't either.
Alright, so uh I'm saying um. Between food, uh vouchers and. Assistance, make that thirty percent with no less than fifteen percent going to food. So staff will be able to make recommendations based on applications that come in and if it's ninety percent applications are food-focused, great. Um but I do want them to have the flexibility to consider and and see what services. Their regard to uh mortgage assistance and and addressing homelessness in this crisis. Uh and then I put the remaining sixty percent less our ten percent admin fee, right, so. The ten percent admin fee, sixty percent to small business assistance, thirty percent toward those human services.
So you're putting a floor. You're putting a floor of a hundred thousand dollars roughly on food distribution, it can't go below a hundred grand.
A hundred and five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, and then the rest of that thirty percent allocation, uh I'm not doing the quick math, uh one forty, two-ten. Would be um. You know, for any of the other uh things you mentioned, rental assistance or vouchers for the homeless. And if those applications don't come in, you know, or we fund them at. Two thousand dollars because that's all the need is in the community, then the rest of that can be used on food distribution.
Correct.
Well, that's okay.
And that that would be up to staff based on the applications that come in. And you know, vetting those providers as to, you know, whether or not they're gonna be affected in in pursuing those goals. Um and then sixty percent towards small business, which is uh four hundred and twenty-one thousand. And then our our ten percent, so that is a a motion.
Okay, real quick, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Duba, we have a second by Commissioner Purush. Um just a point of clarification, Mister Murphy, just to make sure that this motion is valid. Um the way Commissioner Duba has described it, there won't be any issues with um. With HUD or anybody else um. Related to the, to the formula that he's prescribed, correct?
No, I do have, no, uh no, I I do have one specific question. With regard to the, I had listed it as rent more slash mortgage assistance. Are you interested in social service agencies responding to that combo or one or the other? Re- rental or rent or mortgage or both?
Having, having any mix of that, of whatever housing stability services are out there.
Excellent.
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm s- I'm sorry, I still don't understand the percentages, I'm not adding up to a hundred percent here.
Thirty percent for the human services, food and housing, with no less than fifteen percent of that going to food. That's thirty percent.
Pause, when you say fifteen percent, Commissioner Duba, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, just for clarity, when you say fifteen percent, you mean of the overall. Grant amount, seven hundred and two thousand, not fifteen percent of the thirty.
Correct, so half of it, no less than half of that goes to food. So that's thirty percent on the human services, sixty percent on small business, ten percent admin fee.
So. Okay.
And, and these items aren't set in stone. We'll, we'll see what applications we get back. You have the ability to modify any of this at your next meeting. We're simply trying to give the agencies an understanding of how we believe we like to spend our funds. They will inform us as to whether they're able to assist us in that endeavor or not.
Commissioner Macy?
And what Mr. Murphy just said is why I'm not going to spend too much time arguing about this because I think we have a chance to readdress it. I agree that the food distribution is the most immediate need and the most critical one. But I'm not 100% clear that that is, that there is in fact a financial need at this point for that work. I've been in contact with several of these food banks and they are actually doing pretty well in in COVID times. There's been a lot of donations. So I, I guess, I feel like the floor on that may not be appropriate, but I guess we'll see. And I also would like to get some good applications for the rental and mortgage assistance. You know, I hear, I hear what we're saying is that that's going to be difficult to administer because there's not many people who do it. But to me, that's the whole point. There's not that many people who do it. And this is the most critical need for, for families who are in need. So getting a small business to be able to re-employ their workers, their low-wage workers on a low wage. I'm not sure that we're doing them a huge favor to get them off of fairly sizable unemployment check and get them back where they have to be out being exposed, getting that, getting that low wage and maybe still not able to make rent and mortgage at home after several months of not being able to pay it. So for me, the most immediate need for residents, for, for families who are needy would be the rental and the mortgage assistance. So I hope that we see some really great applications from that and that we can consider, consider the applications as we go forward. Of course, I think that the small business assistance program is going to be very crucial as well. I just don't know that it's addressing the need most directly.
Anybody else? All right, walk, call for the vote. I'm going to start from the bottom. Commissioner Dubac? Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Murphy. A little bit more clarity now.
Yes. And if anybody knows any social service agencies that are watching or you know, have them contact me directly.
And we'll get a little bit more clarity next time from the information you pulled with the app, application. So thank you. Good luck, sir. All right, this brings us to item 14, which is the approval of the Service Agreement for Employee Assistance Program. And I believe this is Mr. Dennis Vandilar.
Good evening, Mayor Fornia and members of the City Commission. So I'm going to try and keep this relatively brief. We've been with Counseling Associates out of West Bloomfield for a substantial amount of time. I purposely wanted to make sure in my letter that I didn't criticize their services. I know that we've been generally happy with what they provided for us while they've done it. And then they've certainly kept their fees very reasonable during that time. So much kudos to them. However, we did identify some weaknesses in the program. I know over the last year or two that I've been having some discussions back and forth every now and then about REAP. You know, but kind of came pretty obvious that there were some shortcomings with the provider they currently have as far as not necessarily the, the level of service, but more things like accessibility. There's only one location that our current EAP has. The provider that I'm asking you to approve a contract with, Ulines, has locations all over the metro area. Pretty difficult to not be somewhere in the metro area without being close to one of their locations. Another thing that was kind of identified as being a, an issue, especially when talking to our police and fire chiefs about it is that you know, it'd be helpful to get an EAP that in particular has some accessibility for or availability, I should say, of, of topic experts, of those operating in the public safety arena. So that's something we definitely kept in mind as well as we looked around. As I mentioned in the letter, you know, back in, in January, I asked you to approve a six-month renewal with Counseling Associates, which again is our current EAP, which ends at the end of June. And again, that was, at that time, I indicated to you also that that was specifically so we could go back and really kind of review and then see what else is out there. So we did that with the help of Magquinn Vance or our benefits consultant. We got about five proposals back. Let me see, let's make sure that's five, four actually, I should say. And then obviously we had our current EAP already that we knew the fee of, which makes for a total of five. Cost, again, wasn't really a primary motivator of this. It was really just to improve the services to the employees. And, you know, especially with, with everything else going on right now, it's, it made it especially critical, I think, that we do something like this right now, just because as, I'm just sure you're all very, very well aware that there's a lot of anxiety out there, you know, within the general public and especially amongst our employees as well. So mental health care, I think, is extremely important. And I must, I must admit, and I'm a little biased, my wife is a psychologist. But, you know, I did, it's, it's obviously very, very important. And I think it's also, there's a lot of research out there that shows that having a good EAP can be a very beneficial element to, to, to being a good employer. There's a lot of research out there that showed that indirectly it saves a city or can save an employer a lot of money by improving mental health care of individuals. In addition, you know, especially when we're talking about more quantifiable amounts of money, there's a lot of research out there, for instance, that shows that a lot of the war comp claims that happen out there and accidents that happen at the job sites, a lot of times are a result of mental health issues, you know, whether that's something that goes on at the job site or whether that's something that, that happens at, at the home front. And I do want to emphasize that also, that, you know, the EAP especially is something that is very important. You know, not just address issues that, for things that happen on the job site, but also so somebody can, can have a resource to, to go to somebody and and talk about anything really that, that, you know, might affect the work performance. And, and, you know, so if that, that happens to be in their personal life, then, then they can certainly take advantage of that. And as well as with their existing provider, the proposal that you have as well for, with Ulines also includes having, extending that access to, to direct family members as well. So having said that, the only other thing I would still want to add to that, that I think Ulines particularly brings to the table and then certainly some of the other proposals we've seen. I had some elements here and there too, that, that were in excess of what we were already receiving. But there are some unique elements. I think Ulines has been in the business for approximately 30 years. Under, they started in Michigan. It's, it's an international company at this point. Again, they have locations all over. They have a 24-hour toll-free crisis access line. And they also offer some unique services like a responding to critical incidents. So if we have something, you know, like whether it's a, it's a, it's a shooting or something else that you know, might be going on in the city, then we have an additional resource to fall back on to, 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 to have, have our staff have somebody to reach out to and talk to about these things. And they can certainly come to, to cite as well. In addition to that, and then lastly, really, and I think that's very important also, is the ability for them to provide a lot of training, which I think has also been, been sorely lacking over the last few years. So a couple of things that I'm really trying to resolve by making the switch right now. With that, you know, pricing, you know, is slightly higher than what it was before, as I indicated in the letter also. It is a very marginal increase, a very small amount of dollars, I think, in the grand scheme of things. So right now we're paying $4,200 a year. With Ulines, that would go up to 5510. That is based on a number of full, the number of full-time employees. We have set a number on a quarterly basis, we'll get adjusted upwards or downwards depending on how many full-time employees we'll have. Just because the question might come up, we do have, and because I mentioned in the letter, the other proposals I received just for reference, one of them was pretty much on the dot, exactly the same amount-wise. Another one came in, a couple hundred dollars above that still. And then we had one that came in about $500 below what we're currently paying. So again, a very marginal amount of money. But I do, I do think it's important to point that out, that there is a slight increase. But again, I do feel like we're getting a lot for it in exchange. So with that, I'll, I'll leave the floor and open it up to you.
Questions for Mr. Vandilar? Commissioner Lavasser?
Oh, I can't hear you.
You unmute? Commissioner Lavasser, can you unmute?
I'm sorry, I thought I did. I'm moving for adoption of the resolution as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lavasser. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. I see no discussion. Oh, Commissioner Macy?
Just wanted to thank Mr. Vandilar for bringing this to us. This is a great thing to have and I'm glad we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Now, I'll just add, Mr. Vandilar, you know, a lot of times these sort of things are like an afterthought or something that folks want to publish on a brochure for future employees or, you know, pat themselves on the back, hey, we're doing something. But in this regard, I really appreciate you and the team taking the effort to look into this deeply and talk to your colleagues and find the right provider that meets the needs of our folks and not just meeting the, the checking of a box. So I think that's, we really appreciate the effort you put into this. So nice work. A call for the vote. And I won't say, I'll have to go now. Roll call. Keep forgetting to do that. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, this brings us to the last part of our agenda tonight, or second to last, besides a motion to adjourn, which is the letter of agreement for voluntary furlough program. Mr. Gilliam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based upon discussions that we had with the City Commission in closed session a week ago last Monday night, we reached out to a couple of the city's bargaining units to see if they would be interested in to entering into some kind of an agreement with us that would allow for a furlough program. And, and just so everyone is clear, when we're talking about a furlough program, we're not talking about a layoff. We're talking about a voluntary program whereby employees would express their interest in going on a furlough, that is, in going off the payroll for a period of time. Specifically as proposed through up till the end of July of this year, during that period of time, the employee would become eligible for unemployment benefits. The city would be responsible for paying a portion of the unemployment benefits, but there would be a net cost savings to the city. In addition to that, the employee would be eligible for federal monies under the COVID relief programs. During the period of time that the employee was on furlough, the city would maintain the employee's healthcare. While the employee was on furlough, the employee would not have to make the 10% contribution towards the costs of their healthcare. But when they returned to work, then at that point in time, they would be required to reimburse the city for the money that the city had spent maintaining their healthcare while they were off. During the period of the furlough, if significant, if conditions change significantly, say for example, if someone went on furlough this week and then in a month, City Hall opened back up to the public, situations changed significantly, we'd be able to bring employees back from the furlough program. And again, the program would be voluntary and it would be based upon not only employees' interest, but also a determination by the department head based upon discussions with the city manager that having the employee on furlough wouldn't significantly impact the ability of that department to continue to provide basic service to the employees. So again, it would be an employee who was interested in going on the program. There would be a determination by the, by the city, by the administration that the employee was not indispensable to the city's operations. We reached out first to the Service Employees International Union, SEIU. And the letter of agreement that you have in front of you has been approved by SEIU. It's something that SEIU is interested in doing. We'd also reached out to TPOIM, the Technical and Professional Office Workers Group. Although we didn't have the letter of agreement approval back from them in time to get it on the posted agenda, I would indicate that they're also interested in participating in a furlough program too. And we'll continue, assuming this is something that the, the City Commission is still interested in going forward with, now that we're able to give you some of the, some more of the details. And we'll continue to reach out to the other employee groups to see if any of the employees in those groups are interested in participating. And we'll also take a look at offering the program to some employees that are not necessarily part of any recognized bargaining unit. Specifically, for example, one possibility might be part-time employees over at the library as a way to help the library save some costs. The, the analysis with the part-time employees is a little bit more complicated just because the cost savings to the city isn't quite as clear. And, and make it clear, we do want to make sure that this is going to save the city some money in terms of our payroll costs. We still have to, to be able to provide a basic levels of operation. But basically, we're willing to consider all possibilities at this point in time if the commission gives us the green light. So the resolution that I have provided for you would approve the letter of agreement or the letter of understanding with SEIU regarding the furlough program. It would go one step further to allow me as the city attorney, with the prior approval of the city manager, to go ahead and execute any other letters of agreement with any other employee groups that were substantially similar to the agreement that you're approving tonight. We do that in the interest of trying to move quickly with this program. Other than the, the special meetings that we have, the work sessions that we've got scheduled over the next couple of weeks, the budget, we really don't have a regular meeting scheduled for three weeks. And we'd like to be able to get this program up and running as much as we can, as quickly as we can within the next three weeks. There's a proposed resolution that's been presented to you for approval. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Mr. Gilliam? I see Commissioner Macy has her hand raised.
Yes, although I didn't know it was exactly a question. I'm so glad you came, came forward so quickly. This is the very elusive win-win. For people who are watching and don't, aren't familiar with this, this is entirely voluntary. This is not the city laying anyone off unawares. This is employees volunteering to take a leave from the city in order, in order for them perhaps to be home, to be home with their family, to if they don't have enough work to do, to, to take a break that gives the city's finances a break. While also there is the unemployment provided by the state of Michigan that has been supplemented by the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act, which means that for some employees, they could be making it up $900 a week on unemployment and at the same time saving the city money for that. So we talked about this as, as Mr. Gilliam mentioned in closed session. And this was extremely quick turnaround for this, which is a great thing, I think, for our employees. I hope it works for some of them. And I'm thankful also that Mr. Gilliam and Mr. Schiffman made it work possibly for the library part-time employees as well, who I think this could be a benefit for them too.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. Commissioner Lavasser?
I'm going to move for adoption of the resolution as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Lavasser, second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Perush?
Just very quickly, we discussed this in closed session, that the benefit of adopting a furlough program as opposed to a layoff program, not saying that we necessarily aren't going to get to layoffs at some point. We'll see. But the benefit of this type of program preserves But the benefit of this type of program preserves the health insurance for the employees, which in the middle of this pandemic, to me, would be essential. We may not be able to do that going forward, depending upon how the budget unfolds and how things develop over the remainder of the year. We may not be able to protect that for everyone, for every employee. We may not be able to avoid layoffs. But at least at the present time, it gives us an opportunity to start saving some money, some significant payroll costs, and at the same time, protecting employees' healthcare. And to me, that's very important. And I think this is a great first step in terms of dealing with some of the budget issues that we're going to be dealing with this year.
Anybody else? All right, a call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Dubach.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
All right, and it passes. Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Thank you, Mr. Schiffman. Thank you, team, for putting this together. Nice work, fast work. And, you know, hopefully, this will be another tool that we can put in our box to help us navigate this storm here in front of us, so appreciate it.
Thank you for the input that you provided us with last week. It was very helpful.
Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, notwithstanding any other discussion about how we can better our community. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, we'll do, we'll call vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in, and we'll be meeting next in June. Take care. Thank you.